Okay, it is six o'clock on Monday, December second, twenty twenty four. Um, this is an off week meeting as the um December meetings are. Calling to order our Rutland Select Board meeting, we are meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. Um, we are available on Zoom for anyone who wants to participate or um listen. We also are being livestreamed for or livestreamed for local access cable and recorded for YouTube rearing on local access cable and other social media outlets. Um, is we can start with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America
For relations to the flag of the United States of America.
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One nation, under God.
Uh, we are four member board tonight, um Tom is um unable to make tonight's meeting as it was an off night meeting. Um, I'll move into the minutes Treasury warrant and payroll. I would entertain a motion to approve Treasury warrant twenty five dash eleven and twenty five dash PW eleven.
Awesome, wait, I'm sorry.
Uh, this is not.
Oh, I was gonna say these, we don't have these, right?
That was habit, I'm sorry, I forgot to take it off.
This is what we had approved at our previous meeting that um to authorize the chair to sign
Yep.
the Treasury warrants and payrolls.
That's my idea.
So as soon as I read it, I was like, wait a minute, I wasn't sure if we wanted to approve it ahead of time or not, but um. And I did sign the Treasury warrant and payroll for the previous um for dash ten last week, I believe. Um, we have approval of meeting minutes from our November twelfth, twenty twenty four meeting, this was a regulars meeting. Um, I would entertain a motion for um. Actually, I think we can do the twelfth and the twenty first together unless anyone has any concerns with either of those, I believe everyone was in attendance for those. The twenty first was the meeting before um the special town meeting and Jen, thank you for those minutes. Tamika did the minutes for a regular meeting.
Um, make a motion to approve the November twelfth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes and November twenty first, twenty twenty four special town meeting minutes as presented.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, concerns, corrections? Roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Matt and I.
Wait, man, I.
Thank you, Tamika, thank you, Jen. Um, we had asked last week if we could pull out the um the executive session meeting minutes for possible release, so these minutes had already been um uh approved and it's just to um release them. So if there is a motion to release the executive session minutes from January eighth, February fifth, March eighteenth and September fourth. Um, as we had discussed last week, I think we had agreed to release them, but had asked to have them pulled out separately. So moved. There a second?
Second.
Is there any concerns, comments, these are all issues that have already been um settled and moved on. So we're trying to stay on top of the um executive session minutes and release them as as the um concerns are resolved. Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Matt and I.
Wait, man, I.
Wait, man, I, thank you. Um, we don't have any public hearings posted tonight, um is there anyone here for public comments? On Zoom, name and address, please.
My name is uh John Dayprey, uh two oh four Barry Paxton Road. Uh, good evening, guys. I was basically coming here tonight to see if potentially the select board might um possibly be going to uh do another special meeting for the petition that I did um in the past. I know that that we had the vote um. When they did the question two, a lot of people had left and then uh it was two votes short. And I know they never really got a chance to actually vote on the petition that I did. So I was gonna see if potentially we might be able to set up uh another date to just get a sole vote on that one item. That's why I was coming here tonight. To try to see if you guys might be open to helping me do something like that.
So if I understand correctly, the select board can call a special town meeting at any point. Um, at the, we are required to call a special town meeting if any residents submit a petition with, I believe, two hundred and fifty signatures or more requesting a special town meeting. Um, and if I understand correctly, the consideration would be for the citizen's petition that was act not able to be voted on because the planning board didn't hold the public hearing as required by MGL, is that my understanding, Austin?
Well, so um the petition that was drafted by the gentleman has been acted on by town meeting already. So they would either need to be induce his petition or um as with Article ten um from the recent special time meeting, potentially a board or a town department sponsored article.
Um, and.
Cause I think it was postponed indefinitely, right? So essentially, like, they could vote on it again.
Correct.
Um, and is my understanding correct in that because it was for Article ten because it was a planning board endorsed article that failed, that it there's just, is it two year? Is it a one or a two year sunset, or is there no sunset required because it was a zoning period?
Yeah, so um I don't believe there is that sunset because one, there was no action taken in, it was a um endorsed article by the planning board.
Okay. Okay, I thought for Article ten though, because it was a like a town article and because it was in an endorsed article but had failed, that then there's a sunset.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, you mean for, yeah, Article eleven.
For Article ten, which was a town sponsored one, but then I think Article eleven was essentially just postponed indefinitely, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I was confusing the two.
But that's okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you said there was no sunset period cause all the boards did uh favorable action. So they could vote on it again, is what I remember the the guy saying at the.
I don't.
That's correct.
Okay. I would just wanna double check with legal because I was under the impression that if everything had received favorable action, but it failed at.
Yeah, but so now I guess we're talking about Article eleven, right? So it didn't fail, right, because there was no action taken, yeah.
Okay. Right, 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 yeah. So, thank you.
Sure.
We, I mean, as board, uh it's not on our agenda to discuss for tonight, but that's kind of a a conversation that we can consider. I don't think that we would have anything um looking at the calendar that we could do before the the holidays in a couple weeks, just given posting requirements, even if we were to amenable to going that direction.
But so the gentleman stopped by earlier today and we were talking about hypotheticals for timelines and we did wanna make sure that the planning board, if this, if if the board would take any sort of action, I don't think obviously tonight. We were kinda discussing that hypothetically, for example, if you at your next meeting decided to call, we wanna make sure to give the planning board enough time to properly host um a public hearing and advertise in the papers. So, you know, I think the earliest would be uh mid-January, potential special time meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think.
But of course, it's your, if you decide to call it openly or without um by petition, um, that's your discretion about if and when you wanna hold it.
I just wanna be mindful of the time considerations if if the board were to call one um without a petition, what needs to happen?
Yep.
So, um, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, does the, is the board, does the board understand what the gentleman is proposing? And I think if anything, we would put it on for an agenda item for our next meeting to have that conversation.
Yeah, I have some questions, so I'd rather save them for discussion next time.
Um, is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay, um, thank you, moving into communications, member co- member comments, announcements and town administrator update. Um, I just have a few things, I think um uh Tom had mentioned at the start of the annual town meeting that um the U eleven uh football team was heading off to uh regionals and um uh or state championship against Brockston, Brockton, they won that game, unfortunately, they lost or congratulations, they lost the regionals against New Hampshire, but it's still a great year for those kids. Um, it's really making a mark on the kind of the the West Houston youth football. So congratulations to the the whole organization, the coaches, the teams, um and especially the kids, cause I know they really played their heart out. Um, Festival of Trees is this weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, I believe Friday night, there's a concert at Lilac Hedge that is a ticketed event. I think it's five dollars per person or twenty dollars per family. Um, and then Saturday and Sunday is here in the library, um free and open to the public. I'm not sure, Tamika, do you know if they're still accepting um any entries?
They are, yep.
So if you are wanting to decorate a tree or enter a um gingerbread house or gingerbread construction.
wreaths, they're looking for wreaths, they're trying to rent today.
Oh, especially wreaths, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you can reach out, I think phone number is best, I don't, I didn't see anything on our website, Tamika.
Uh, yes, it's under the calendar and it's also under the news and announcements.
Okay.
So there, it links you right to the whole document that was sent out in the mail.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, so you can find everything on the website and I think they're asking instead of call or instead of mailing the um form back that you um call to register any um anything. Um, and I believe the tree lighting is Saturday night at dusk, probably, I think, six thirty usually, right?
Six thirty.
Yeah, um, and so it's always a good time, good community event, the Rutland Historical Society does a great job kind of putting, working to get bring it all together. Um, it's very family friendly, the kids are gonna love it, so please come on up. Um, we have a town holiday giving tree that is in the annex right now. Um, you can stop in and get a tag off the tree um to donate a a gift to a a family in need in the community. Um, I think all the details for that are also on the website. Um, and if you stop in Community Hall or the annex, they'll be able to provide you with the information also. Um, and we have the second annual Light Up Rutland event sponsored by the Events Committee. Um, that information is also on the website. Um, and I believe this is the one where they um collect addresses and put together a map and drive around the community, you can see all the houses decorated and then vote for your favorites. Um, all that information for registration and everything is also on the website under news and announcements as well. Um, we're heading into, I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving holiday and enjoyed the time with family and friends. Um, we're heading into the busy, busy holiday season, so our meeting schedule, the select board is adjusted this month. Um, and I think some of the other boards and communities may have adjusted schedules, especially closer to the second half of the month. So if you're looking for anything, just pay attention to the calendar online, um, and we will do that. So that's all I have, do any other members have any comments or?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Austin, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, good evening, Members of Board, uh, just a few updates. Um, we have kicked off uh the Regional HR project uh two weeks ago. I attended a kickoff meeting at CMRPC uh with Connor, who is the Regional Coordinator for CMRPC and Stephanie, who is the new HR Director at CMRPC. Um, essentially just to kind of get overall goals of what the project intends to accomplish. Um, and also a list of stakeholders, including members of the board, um and members of staff, um town departments and and um oh, um, general staff members. Um, that will be sort of the first few months of the project, data collection, interviewing, understanding uh Rutland's needs, um our HR functions, um and then um developing a model um for potential communities and partners to uh join with. Also exploring potentially um partnership opportunities for Regional HR with the Regional School District. Um, and that will come back in the form of a report, but that uh that study has started. Um, and uh over the next few weeks, members of the board and also members of staff will begin to hear from CMRPC. Um, likely for either a conference call, Zoom meeting or in-person chat um to gather feedback from everyone. Uh, town departments, I believe, well, the deadline was about an hour ago, um have submitted their budget requests for fiscal year twenty six. Um, you will recall the guidance from the board was level funded budget requests. Uh, we will take the next few days to compile that, put that into the overall budget document and then beginning next week, beginning reviews with town departments um to, you know, dive into those budgets a little bit more, um with the intent to come back to this board and Finance Committee with an overall um needs um budget presented by the town departments. Uh, we also have a meeting, uh the Select Board Chair, Finance Committee Chair and myself will be meeting with each of the five communities and the district on December twelfth um for a budget roundtable uh for fiscal year twenty six, this is kind of called by the uh district administration uh under the success, from the suggestion of um the Town Administrators and Town Manager from Holden. Um, we really felt it was important to uh for the district to hear where we are in our budget process. Um, no surprise that all of us are are challenged with our resources, including towns like Holden um and some other communities that generally have better years, but this is not a great year overall. Um, that, the the goal of that is to, for the school committee members and district administration to go back to their associated subcommittees and hopefully inform a a budget and budget request that um is responsive to the the community's um identified challenges. Uh, just, I sent the board an update, um and also we posted on social media, but for those who didn't watch or are not on social media, um, the town uh was fortunate to receive a two hundred thousand dollar um inclusion in the Economic Development Bond Bill for a secondary water source study. Um, in addition to fifty thousand dollars for intersection improvements, uh design improvements to the intersections of Maple Avenue and Main Street and Palmagussett Road in Main Street. Um, obviously, those are state roads, so we'll have to coordinate with DOT for the for that project. And the secondary water store, water source project has been, I think, long identified in our sanitary surveys from uh DEP and and E O E E A. Um, this obviously doesn't specify what source we will use, it just explores all our options. Um, and then hopefully we'll identify a probable cost for the rate users. Um, and really what is most feasible for the rate uh ratepayers and water users, so. Um, we know of a couple options already in town, but this will also include kind of a desktop study and then um for areas where we may need to do some well drilling, um actually the costs of boring and drilling wells as well and flow tests as well. Uh, Water Department, um, we have a water operator two opening, uh the individual has uh accepted a position with the MWRA. Um, so they'll be going to Marlboro, um, so we do have a new opening there for water operator two that would be posted shortly. Um, and then just, I wanna spend a couple of minutes just to um debrief a little bit and and give some thoughts and if there's any discussion, of course, from the board, but just on um special town meeting. Um, most importantly, Article two project, I think there was a lot of good feedback that happened and occurred during that discussion at town meeting. Obviously, there were some things that were said that I don't disagree, that I don't agree with, and there were things that were said that I do agree with. And while I still do believe that it would have been in the best interest of the community to advance that project, um, I think that it's an opportunity for us to go back um and take a look at um the work that we've done and also identify a path moving forward. One of the first things that uh actually is occurring tomorrow is I have a also a debrief call with our engineering company. Um, and they have some suggestions that's responsive to some of the comments that happened at the special time meeting that maybe can um, you know, hopefully provide something that maybe is a little bit better um in terms of some of the recreational needs and also the needs that were identified for the senior sector. Um, ultimately, there's still some more investment that needs to happen, especially on the recreation side. So we'll have to talk with the board and the community about um funding sources and a path forward for that. But um I do think it's a a fortune, especially for the town hall facilities. Uh, there was little to no discussion about town hall at all. Um, and anyone who goes into town hall, especially upstairs, downstairs, annex, even just the regular floor knows that that space is not adequate and sufficient for not just staff, but the the general public. So um I do think it's important, obviously, it's a select board goal, I think it's important to continue advancing that. Um, and I will do whatever it takes to um to do that and obviously under the guidance and direction of the board, so. Um, but again, I do, I do appreciate, and that's why town meetings are fun, uh because you get get to have those kind of discussions, so. Um, but if there's any other feedback that folks have heard over the past week or so or two weeks from town meeting, I'd be happy to take that, obviously, especially for my meeting tomorrow with the engineering company.
Thank you, Austin, does any members of the board have any questions or comments?
Yep.
I have a few, Austin, for a couple different things that you touched on, but I'll leave the board.
Hmm, yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have um one, if I may, um related to the school budget discussion. Do you, is that also a point where they're gonna be bringing forward any capital requests for the towns as part of that? Or is it too early for that part of this?
Yeah, so they, they have already submitted their capital requests and and CMRPC has begun reviewing them.
Yeah.
They have only submitted two requests for this year to be funded.
Okay.
Uh, the first is uh paving and and resurfacing of the parking lots and sidewalks.
Parking lots, yeah.
Um, and the second was replacing the carpet at Naqak with VCT tile.
Okay. Those haven't changed?
Prices?
Well, just in general, yes, okay.
Oh, correct, no, the requests have not changed.
Okay, all right, I might ask Harry later, I don't know. But um, no, I I have some other comments on Article two as well, so I'll wait, so. Other questions you can ask before we, I'm assuming there's other, so.
Harry, did you have questions? Paul, did you have questions?
Go ahead, you go.
Um, I just wanted to add that I believe uh the school committee, Rutland School Committee reps and FinCom have scheduled a meeting for December nineteenth at six P M. Um, and Select Board is invited also, so I imagine we'll all co-post the FinCom and Select Board together, um if you don't mind. That way, if we have a quorum there, um, that's, and it was made very clear that the school committee members are more than um capable of attending and speaking as individuals, but they couldn't speak on behalf of the entire committee. Um, so I think that that's a good opening step and I wanna thank FinCom for kind of opening that door and and pursuing that avenue, thank you. Um, Austin, I have a question about the Economic Development Bill. Um, am I correct in that it's a bond bill, so it's not absolutely funded yet? We have to apply for that funding and hope that it gets funded? I know bond bills work a little, I just wanna be mindful of how that's gonna work, sorry.
Yeah, so. So we don't have, we don't have to apply. Um, it is, bond bills are weird, it's like the borrowing authorization that we did for the fire truck, right? So the legislature, the legislative body of the states said we're allocating this amount of money. Um, but ultimately, it's up to the executives to actually take the money and fund it.
Fund it.
Um, that takes some time sometimes, it depends on the administration, it depends on um whatever executive office that the funds are allocated to. Um, I suspect that this administration might be a little bit more, especially depending on what time of the year it is. Um, and there are some important priorities in there. Um, but you're correct that, you know, we don't have this money this fiscal year, we may not have it next fiscal year. Um, I believe the authorizations are good for five years. Um, and then generally, the legislature either reauthorizes in a special supplemental budget or whatever. But um what is important for um the Select Board and for the town to continue doing is every time you see your state senator or your or Representative Ferguson or anyone from the legislature, is remind them about that bond bill. Um, so they can kind of also do their poking, if you will, um to release that money. But um, you know, in other words, money is allocated for us, just needs to be released from the executive office of Administration and Finance.
I just wanna be mindful, cause I know in the past, we've had money sitting in bond bills that was never actually funded and so there was a chunk of change for some of the um driveway between Glen uh Central, Naqak and Central Tree, I believe, and a couple other projects that just sat and were never funded. And so I just wanna be mindful that that we're doing our due diligence to ensure that it's still on everyone's radar.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, and I don't know if maybe there's a way to kind of track that for, you know, um semi regular updates just for us to check in or um just so that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle.
Yep.
Thank you, um, and I think that that was my, those were my questions apart from Article two. So, did anybody else have any other questions? Um, I'm glad to see the regional HR piece moving forward al- also with CMRPC. I think um Rutland could really benefit from having some some HR support um as we're moving into kind of the the reviews and goals and rejected settings as well as just um some other uh staffing considerations. So I appreciate that work moving forward, thank you.
Just a question. Um, we all hear about the traffic situation at Maple and that. When is that process gonna start, do we know?
So interestingly enough, we received notice about work potentially on this intersection before we actually received notice about this fifty thousand dollars. So through CMRPC, there's actually this new program which cities and towns can apply for, which um allows for some assistance to get towards a twenty five percent design. That's one of the challenges that a lot of communities, especially like Rutland, has is we don't have money to start a project. So CMRPC actually is offering, so through that program, we reached out to them. Um, and they had indicated that actually this intersection is already in DOT's work plan. You'll also recall that CMRPC um this federal fiscal year, so ending next, ending September thirtieth of next year, CMRPC is doing a corridor study, uh study of the entire one twenty two A corridor, from one twenty two all the way to wherever it ends. Um, maybe Worcester, is that, I think, is that right? Um, but with the focus on Holden and Rutland. Um, so part of that, DOT will be working directly with CMRPC to look at these two intersections, but the corridor altogether. And what I suspect will happen is before this money is even released, DOT, very similar to what is being done at the Four Corners, will probably already have a concept design and may already have it on the tip before this is even released. So this was kind of like, we needed to try to advocate for the project as much as possible. So I don't know when exactly, but I know that um CMRPC probably starting next spring and summer uh will be doing data collection, traffic analysis. Um, and then they'll kind of be out in the field on the entire corridor to do their study and then working closely with um DOT. But it was interesting to learn that, um probably from a lot of feedback from everyone, um DOT has already put this on their work plan, which essentially means that this will be a future tip project, it's just.
The timing.
When, you'd never know.
Um, I, do you know um whether they're, if they're looking at it from a perspective of not just cars, but heavy freight access, easy access from like sixty eight or Worcester, you know, through stuff through here?
Yeah, so if you look at, so that goes into the uh a corridor profile study, so there's some really good examples on CMRPC, CMRPC's website, um where they look at everything. First, cause foremost, first and foremost, they're doing traffic counts, right? So they're able to to tell, um especially during the peak times, you know, how many trucks are going through, um all different kinds of vehicle. And then when they go into the design stage, um you know, I think the the popular design is the complete streets design. So it's got bike lanes, it's got healthy sidewalk, um and then adequate space for all kinds of activity there, so. But yes, to answer your question, they look at all types of traffic, especially now with that complete streets design.
So if I understand, they're gonna do a traffic study from, say, Maine to uh Maine to through Palmagussett out to sixty eight? They're gonna do one twenty two, they're gonna, no?
No, so it's just one twenty two A, so um from essentially the, was it Long Pond?
Yeah.
Um, to Holden, the Holden Town Line, so that Main Street, essentially.
Okay. I'm curious, because doing that through the center of town doesn't alleviate anything if we're not looking at all the other traffic patterns that exit or enter the center of Rutland.
Yeah. Well, the the challenge, the the challenge that, right, one of the biggest challenges that we have is just with the overall design of two intersections, right? Um, so, I mean, the traffic kind of is what it is and it also fluctuates during the time of the year. We just need to figure out a way to move people better. Um, especially now that we've done, uh we we made the traffic change on the driveway between the two schools, you have a lot more people that are turning left and right on Maple Ave, right, and using that intersection, so that's a little bit busier there. Um, so they're gonna take a look at all that and the activity of folks and figure out what's the best way Um so they're gonna take a look at all that and the activity of folks and figure out what's the best way to move people quickly. Is it a traffic signal? Is it a roundabout? Is it a rotary? Um but all of those are contemplated during the study phase and then as it goes to the design phase.
So once the study phase is done, we'll get a copy of that to review the study phase?
Yep, that's a public document. Yeah, they'll probably present to a select board meeting, public hearings, things like that.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Um I know in the past, Chapter Ninety money has been used, kind of, I mean, I think that's how kind of we met the design requirements for the current tip project. So I know that that's less than ideal because then that takes away road maintenance of the other roads in town. Um but I know that that's oftentimes a popular method that smaller communities use to fund that that design piece if needed. Um and I do think having Mast out in town doing the tip project brought a a lot of the issues of the two intersections to light um at the state level because they didn't seem to really care too much until it, they were here. So thank, and Austin, I know you did a lot of advocating for it also, so thank you for for that. Um moving on to the Article Two conversation, I guess, if we have a few minutes for that. Um Jen, I think you have some, I have some, so.
Yeah, I think I echo um Austin's sentiments that I was disappointed that it didn't move forward in any fashion. Um I think there's still a lot of miscommunication that what was presented as part of the presentation a few weeks prior was not a set in stone design. Um you know, there were a lot of comments about the location of the senior center being where the annex is and we tried to convey that that was not as that was not a decided factor, it was just something that was potentially put forward. Um and and whatnot and and I agree with you, there was very little focus on the town department needs uh as well. So I'm, I was definitely disappointed that it didn't go forward. I think some of the other things that I've heard is that there needs to be a little bit more of a holistic review of all town buildings and needs and some sort of study in that fashion. Um personally, I don't see how that's um really an option for us because we're never gonna be able to accommodate redesign and space needs for every single town building renovation wise. By the time we were able to get through all of those needs, who knows what would have changed in the community at that point. So I think it would behoove us to focus on the high priority areas, being town hall, a senior center and obviously, as it came up in town meeting, recreation needs. Um so if there's a way that we can formulate some sort of plan to facilitate anything associated with moving a plan forward for those particular areas, I think that should be a focus for the the time being.
Paul, Harry, do you have any comments about Article Two? That was the um the space needs.
Yeah, uh I think what I've heard is, and maybe a little of my own opinion, is I think the town was disappointed to spend thirty thousand dollars on a study that would move the senior center into the center of town, into the building, and I know it was just a study, where it doesn't meet the complete requirements of the senior center. That's what I heard is that, it's like, why did we spend a thirty thousand dollars for that? We could have just took that and expanded it and tied it in and we would have supported the eighty thousand. But to already spend thirty and then ask for another eighty, that was the comments that I heard. So uh and and as far as, I agree, we can't take all the buildings all at once. But I think in a future plan, my feeling is, in a future plan, we can't rely on the center of town to be the focus for Rutland. We have to find or look at alternative places where the center or where the Rutland Rutland establishment, if you will, can go, whether it be the town hall, the senior center, uh the uh the police, the fire. All these things, uh recreation department, uh the center just isn't gonna do it. So if we're gonna build something out and we're gonna do it a little, we gotta have a place where we need to go to. Cuz certainly, I don't think in the next twenty years in this town, it's gonna be the center of town. We just can't do it. So I think that is, part of it is looking at where we have the ability to go in the future and kind of focus, what can we do about that?
I've heard the same thing, particularly centered around the senior center. What would we be doing with it? Where were we looking at and what what our what our thoughts were? So you know, at this point in time, um that seems to be a key element to what the town is interested in right now.
So I've heard similar comments, but I think some of it is misconception and misinformation that's been out. I think the department um heads and staff and building o- owners and everything were asked to participate in the original thirty thousand dollar study. Um and individuals that were uh participatory in um different activities or functions of those buildings were asked to particip- participate also. Um and taking into consideration space needs in in similar sized communities, similar demographics and everything. Um that, to me, that thirty thousand dollars was a a a roadmap kind of and would have provided an opportunity for this eighty thousand dollars to really engage the public and find out what what they felt their needs were. If the senior center didn't seem to be uh adequate, then that was the opportunity that would have provided more opportunity for a conversation. It, there was nothing that was tying anything the to, I think even that eighty thousand dollars could have come back and said, you know what? We decided we want to tear downtown hall and build new because that's the cheaper option per square foot. Um and that would have provided an opportunity for that. Um and so it it was, it saddened me that folks were so hooked on uh um essentially a roadmap um uh that was very conceptual and not willing to kind of move forward a project, knowing that this is how projects happen. Not just that we're throwing money at it, but this is how state projects happen and town projects happen. And we have to follow procurement and we have to be um hopefully a little bit more um open and participatory with our citizens. And that's what that eighty thousand dollars would have provided. My concern is, and I hear very much, that we need recreation space and we need senior senior center space and we need new town hall space and we need all of this. How are we gonna fund that though? I, that's, this was, everything would be debt excluded when the project comes to fruition. And to look at those big three items, I don't know how town would pass a debt exclusion for that monetary amount of money. And I think the recreation route was not, didn't meet all of the needs, but it was a step towards meeting needs and then hopefully continuing to work with the public-private partnerships and everything. Um you know, we could be totally radical and say, you know what, let's take down the building on Glenwood and there's a whole lot of land and space over there, so move a whole bunch of stuff either to Memorial Field here, push everything off uh back off the common a little bit, open up Memorial Field for more town building stuff and move field space and complex over to Glenwood Road. There's some property at the Heights still, there's, that's not necessarily the the amount of space that a large complex would happen. But all of this was some of what that eighty thousand dollars could have, could have worked towards. And I think that that's my frustration is the fact that recreation was there saying, we're not getting recreation, we offered to add recreation, didn't wanna go. Senior Center was there, didn't, wasn't happy with that, even though it was conceptual, and so that didn't go. And and I wanna say again, it was conceptual, everything was conceptual, but there was input from all of the department heads and all of the staff. Um so it wasn't done in a silo and there wasn't, um it wasn't done without um input. And so uh nothing that was presented was set in stone, um and I think that's where my frustration is. So I think that, you know, we'll spend some time as board, I hope, to regroup and kind of figure out next steps with Austin and Tamika, if you guys are still on board with it, and um the department heads, but knowing that that it's a a real need and at the very least, we can do something for town hall. So that's kind of my.
Question?
Part of it, I think, then would be for me to look at, what was the input originally that went into this thing? Is there any way we can have access to that information? What departments put into it? What what committees had said anything about or fed information into it by which we could have, which we developed this? That would help me going forward, not saying, well, we already did this, so why are they arguing or why are they doing this?
So the the company spent, if I may, the company spent, I think, two entire days um in the field, going through each office, talking to staff members. Quite literally, they were, I mean, they they spoke to Tamika for a few minutes, um talking about the needs, just for example, for Tamika. Um and interviewed every staff member in every department in the two facilities. Um and spent quite an amount of time at the senior center, in every room. Um talking with staff and talking with folks that are in the room, um talking with people in the kitchen. Um and asking what their needs are and informed um the square footage and the space allocation per those discussions. So it was, it was mostly fieldwork, Harry.
Is there any notes to that fieldwork we can look at?
I, we can ask for the engineer's field notes. Um but most of it was like dimensional and I think they put into, you know, kind of like that that space needs matrix that you saw.
Yeah.
And then there's, and I'm sorry, Harry, just there's um, you saw in the space needs matrix, uh the square footage, it also showed occupancy, so how many people per room. So for example, um the allocation for the senior center activity room, I think, was fifteen hundred square feet, which is about a hundred and fifty people. Um it's like a ten by ten or something like that. Um you know, but again, I don't disagree, I think I said this on the town meeting floor. I can see the opportunity for, for example, a second activity room, maybe with a divider, right, if you wanna plan for future growth as the senior center population is or one of our fastest growing populations. But that feedback could happen during the master planning process and design process. So it was, in my opinion, too early to shut something down that isn't anywhere close to being final. Um but I can certainly um ask tomorrow if they have specific notes.
Well, I guess one of the big complaints I heard from people who were seniors was, why do I have to go to the top of the town hall to cook food or stuff like that? Why can't we have everything encompassed in one building? Why can't we have the kitchen that we have now in the cafe in one building? So whatever that organization did, it makes me question whether they really took that information that they were looking for and put it into the overall plan.
Yeah, so you're talking about, you're talking about the break, the employee break room and kitchen area that was in the upstairs of the proposed town hall?
In the C O A.
No, but you said, mentioned something about town hall.
Oh, no, that the.
So there was a function room, the the current meeting room
Yeah.
um in town hall, the proposed addition had um an employee break room, which they do not have now with kitchen facilities, things like that. So that was totally separate than the C O A.
Right, but they had, if we did do that, they had to go into the town hall, cook their food and bring it back into the, that was what I was hearing. So there was a, the the explanation didn't get to them or the explanation wasn't right for them. And that's what I'm trying to look at. What what information did they give and how come we ended up with this issue? Cuz I guess my personal feeling is, yeah, we needed to do something, so I was surprised when it didn't pass.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out how to get it to them now so they understand better.
Quite literally, after tomorrow, I could potentially have a new sketch that has kitchen and a second activity room, which would, it's good, to be honest, my, I think my conversation is gonna take probably a half an hour. Um but that's something that could have been extensively done during the master planning and design process that folks could have actually had feedback and participated in. Uh but it is what it is and we'll move on to the next steps. I do want, and I don't think we obviously will not have this tonight, but um you know, future discussion about what you do wanna include in a pu- future potential project, if, for example, if you're talking about like a supersized facility that has enough space for, for example, all three of the needs that were talked about, town offices, rec and and senior center, um whatever you call it. And then I think what's really important, especially after that discussion that happened at town meeting, I, while I think it's early, I think the board should establish a building committee, so it's their project. And there can't be any discussion about, well, the engineer said this, or Austin said this, or at the select board meeting, this happened. It's in the minutes, the building committee drove it, this is their project. Um and then there really can't be any discussion about disagreement because the community decided this. And I think that that should be, I don't know if it has to happen at your next meeting, but I think as we continue to talk about this project, uh that will be something I will propose to you guys.
I would be amenable to kind of, for our next meeting, looking at drafting, depending on how the agenda is looking, a draft charge and membership and putting the call out so we can start getting uh interested parties proceeded kind of going into the winter months on me.
But what's the, but what is the process that, I mean, are we talking about doing another article in spr- at the Springtown meeting to try and pass something similar that is agreeable to all the people that have in interest in the project? Or I know we had some early discussions about, I know there's, after Article One, there's some leftover ARBA funds. Is that something that could be allocated to this so that we can do something a little bit more immediate rather than waiting another six months just to get? I I just, I hesitate to s- to s- start putting a call out for a building committee for something that was so divisive and went literally nowhere at town meeting.
Yeah.
Um that's, to me, seems like it's putting the cart before the horse.
I I agree, but I think there was also a lot of feedback about, you know, well, we weren't involved in this. So um I think the best way to get them involved is to put them on the committee, um and they drive the project. Um obviously, the committee still reports to the board and still has to report back to uh town meeting and and the town in general. Um I think there are some opportunities, there's the article um for the previous senior center that that is remaining, there's some ARBA funds. Um I'll see what new product, new work I can get out of tomorrow that, you know, maybe is a little bit more responsive and convince some of the comments that were mentioned. Um and see where we can go from there, but I do think it is important. Um I do, while I do agree that it's a little early, I do think it's important to um put together a committee to drive consensus about what this project should look like. Um that can work with a future engineering company, design firm, whatever we decide for a process. But I also think that the timeline should probably be driven by you folks if if you do want to continue a building project, advancing to a future phase in a building project for a future town meeting, I think we we should know that, so we can start planning for that and put together all the options.
A couple other comments that I heard is, a lot of people were um wanting to know what the cost to the, to to their tax bill would be and uh not, I don't know how to communicate that we don't know that yet because it was a master plan. And we were, that was part of the work that we were doing, was to design something and have a census to, this is the the amount of debt that we have going off. This is where we should be with debt on. We didn't have an opportunity to go into those conversations at town meeting because it was so divi- divisive about the space needs, that it wasn't even about the funding piece. Afterwards, though, I've heard a lot about this, so maybe that's some consideration, either if we do a building committee or it going in through the winter, um some public information sessions as far as, you know, if you want this size project, this is what it's gonna cost. This is how town finances, municipal finance works, especially when it comes to debt. Um and uh what that would look like over um the course of of the project. Um obviously, we wouldn't have hard numbers because it would depend what came out of it. But knowing if we did roughly kind of what was proposed at town meeting with the expanded town hall and a senior center, what that cost ballpark would be versus if we wanted to do a much larger facility, kind of encompassing um full-out rec, full-out senior center, full-out town hall, um what that would look like as well, cost-wise. Um the other piece was, people still seem to not realize or understand that the money that was generated from the sale of the Heights is essentially only able to be used for um projects that would require borrowing for greater than five years, um or building and and
Land purchases.
land purchase. Um and people don't seem to understand that. And so I got some feedback that they thought that the eighty thousand dollars was coming out of um free cash or uh the budgetary, like a excess le- excess capacity in the levy, which isn't true. And so again, I think that that's something where we need to communicate better to our boards and committees as well as to the public, that piece of funding. And I think there's still some misinformation going around out there that that's not true. And um I'm not sure where that misinformation is generating from. Um but if, you know, again, we can just be more clear on that funding mechanism um and the funds, the amount of funds that are there and what they can be used for, um I think would be beneficial also.
Can I show you something real quick? Just about debt. I didn't know we'll have this discussion, but no, that's not how I wanted to do it, but. So just the chart on the left. So just the chart on the left, right, so, um, this far right is. Um, our debt service for fiscal year twenty four, you notice at the bottom, there's a little blue bar here. That was our debt service for FY twenty four. The maximum allowed is seventy two million dollars. We have a lot of capacity for debt. Um, our highest it ever was, wh- which actually is this chart, was thirty two million, and that was in two thousand seven, that's when we did our. I think our latest borrowing of, I think it was twelve million dollars for a school. Um, so even if we did the project as proposed, we would still be lower than our highest borrowing ever. Um, so we have a lot of capacity. Um, sorry, I didn't realize that this was here. Um, so just for the community to be aware of, um, you know, we've let a, as you can see, we've let a lot of debt fall off the books over the years. Um, and this doesn't even include, most of this was in the levy, wasn't even excluded. Um, so this really did kind of impact general fund operating budgets, uh, most building projects nowadays would be excluded. Um. Interestingly enough as well, um, five percent, uh, this cap is actually five percent of the equalized valuation of the community, so. All of our property is worth one point four billion dollars in Rutland. You can actually petition D O R to go to ten percent. And it's amazing to see, whoops, edit that. I just want to show you, I can't do this cause I have it open. I did this on my computer at, at the, at the office, it goes to. A hundred and thirty six million dollars, which I don't propose ever doing that, but the point is, we have not done a lot of borrowing. We've let a lot of debt fall off the books. Um.
Into the detriment, I would argue to the detriment of our town buildings and our town services as far as.
Yep.
The space needs of, of the community.
And to be honest, that debt also includes water and sewer, so we have, um, also let a lot of our water and sewer infrastructure fall off the books. Um, so, you know, whether it's, and I know and I recognize the calls to do a comprehensive assessment of all the buildings. Candidly, that's been done already. Um, there was a twenty twenty one facilities ma- uh, management plan. That we're in year five, or we're beginning year five, that plan says by year five, you will have twenty two million dollars in capital needs. We are on year four, or year three or four, we're getting close to major capital needs, so, um. Understanding though, that I think some of the calls were master planning for all the buildings, but, um, to some of the comments that, that you folks have made tonight, um. There's significant costs with doing that, um, and we have to be very strategic. I think we'll have to. One of our next big projects probably will be a school project, we also can't forget about the public safety facility and their needs as those. Um, three departments continue to grow, so that chart that you saw with seventy two million dollars is gonna fill up pretty quickly. Um, now, I don't wanna scare people, but I wanna demonstrate that there is significant action that needs to be taken by the community if you wanna demonstrate that. Our facilities are important, um, and the services that we're providing to the community is important too.
I, I think you could probably get town buy-in, I hope, rather than showing them how much debt we can absorb. Is to show them how much your taxes will be by absorbing that debt. So if you're showing somebody that we can absorb twenty million, but to do so, your taxes are gonna go up an extra thousand dollars a year. That's what your town has to look at.
Yeah.
Okay. I know, I mean, I, I'm on the C I P C, I, Austin's right, we got a lot of capital needs coming up. But it's also looking at, what are you gonna ask the townspeople to pay to get all this stuff done, so. Uh, personally, I think it can be done over years, like Jen had said, you can't do everything all at once. But we gotta know what that's gonna be going forward, so.
Like that?
Yeah.
So, I showed you this the other day, Harry, when we met, right?
Uh, yeah, I'd like.
So, yeah, so this is a really good, um, and simple way to show the impact of, um, our overall levy, right? So this includes excluded debt, um, well, I, just overall levy, right, so these are all projections, right? So I just wanna be mindful that these are based off of rolling averages and assumptions, but this doesn't assume any projects, right? But based off of these projections, the average increase over the next few years, um, will be, you know, two hundred dollars for twenty, twenty six. Um, ninety, hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty dollars over the next few years, so. Um, when we have better numbers about what these projects potentially could cost, we could put that in here. And show, um, what the cost, for example, if you were to pay for the senior center or pay for, um, this massive facility, what that would look like, but. You know, this is already modeled out and can be shown, um, but again, we just need. We need better figures to be able to pump in here. I could easily do that and, and do the twenty five million and, um. You know, see what that, demonstrate what that would have looked like, but again, even that number is before we even get to a final number. Um, but, but I agree with you, I think to be successful, um, for any of these projects, especially when. And hopefully, when this does come to a future town meeting, we have a better cost, um, estimate about what this would look like. Show this, because I think people have confidence when they know that the tax rate is stable. Um, so, you know, as our values continue to go up, our tax rate actually goes down, now, obviously, we know that, um. You know, our parcels, like, our, our Rutland continues to grow, so our value is gonna keep going up, and also our level of services will continue to grow. Um, so, you know, we just have to be mindful of that, this is kind of the, the average, which kind of drives all of this, so I took from FY nineteen. So a five or six year average, um, and put those figures into the projections up top. Um, but this is something that I think we've already put together and, and can be shown, but again, we just need, we need to advance something. To be able to show this and people be confident that it's accurate.
Yeah, it's, sorry, go ahead.
I'm a taxpayer, sitting here, I'm going, two hundred bucks, two of course is bad, and I use it bad. But then I say, I, I was paying sixty six hundred, and now I'm paying seventy two hundred four years later. Where do I come up with that extra six hundred bucks? Where do I get it? If my job doesn't give me a pay increase and I'm not in the sales force where I can make more money for myself, or I'm on a fixed income for social security, where do I get that? So, not that we can't present it to them, but we've gotta give them a reason why they're gonna have to give up more dough. For the town.
That's.
And that's a hard sell for a lot of people.
I agree, Harry, and it's, it, it's gonna be that way no matter what, I mean.
And, and my point is.
Regardless of a project or not.
Right, well, you said, we, we parse this stuff out, you know, we don't pull all the teeth at once.
Right.
You know, we pull one tooth and another tooth, okay, maybe the town can tolerate that. But we can't go in and put full dentures in type of thing, that doesn't work, so.
But I think also, I, I don't disagree, and I think that the town then. Has some reckoning to do if we wanna maintain this level of services that we have, because that's just essentially level funding.
Yeah.
Our level of services, that's not adding anything or, or anything, and it's probably, in a lot of ways. Going to decrease the, the serv- you know, decrease the, the, the department budgets, because. But also, we need to be, I think, the town needs to be more open to economic development. What was the other article that failed at town, on the town floor, was an opportunity, not even a guarantee, but an opportunity for an additional. Retail marijuana, ma- retail marijuana license that would bring in additional, it would help revitalize an area of town that has. Core economic development potential and bring in additional tax revenue, um, from a, an economic retail perspective and not. Um, and, and not the, the, uh, citizens taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we, Rutland to me is in this weird dichotomy, we don't wanna pay more taxes. We don't want more business, we don't want this, we wanna keep all of our services, and what continues to happen, we continue to build large homes. That are being sold for seven hundred thousand dollars or more, um, and there's that, that dichotomy. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I think we as a community have a lot of hard reckoning to do then.
I, I mean, I agree, we built a lot of homes, but I also agree in some way that. We've dropped the ball in bringing business into here for many, many years, we've dropped the ball. And I look at it as the board's job to make sure that doesn't continue. Make sure we get the right people in the right place doing the right thing. So, a- and, you know, we're never gonna bring in a Walmart to this town. But there are scales that we can bring in, that does provide some good, we've got a lot of land out there, town on land, that we could still. Invite businesses to, and that's my only thing, so, you know, what we're doing is nice, but. That's, that's not really plowing the fields, so to speak, we're not getting the crops that way. So that's my two cents.
The town needs to be informed as to what the thinking is. They, they really need to have a access to this information as a John Q. And so something that is understandable and digestible by them, that's a lot of what I hear is. Where can we get this information? What is this information? Okay, so, you know, these are things that really should be studied and looked into as well.
Paul, do you have, what's the best way to reach, reach people? We, we've, in the past, we've held public information sessions, nobody attends. Um, we put stuff on the website, we, our meetings are televised, we try to point people on social media. On the town sign, what's, what's your sense? I mean, I've heard people literally saying, call me. Or mail me something, and there's a cost, especially on the mailing side, um, and I don't think that that was always well received in some of. The mailings that have gone out recently either.
One thought that immediately comes to mind is, uh, at the, uh, presentations for proposition two and a half override the last time around. They had a series of Sunday meetings here in the library that were open to the town to attend. And I thought that they were fairly well attended, and I was also fairly well impressed with a number of department managers and. Uh, people from outside of here, like the school district and whatnot, that also attended and were there to answer questions, so I mean. I, you know, that's one possible way of doing something like that, is to get the information out there, so that, you know. People will, in my opinion. Digest more of something like that than they will by sitting there watching us on television discussing, um, discussing ifs.
Any other comments? I mean, it sounds like the board is still interested in moving a project. Forward, what that looks like and how best to do it, I think we're still kind of under consideration. I don't disagree that the building committee seems kind of premature, but at the same time, based on all the feedback that we get. It's, we need, we need professional advice, but we don't want the professional advice, we really. Only wanna believe our resident advice, so if we have a resident avenue to provide that, um, that can work together with the, the professional.
Um. If the project were to advance, I know that's going to be a, a need, but I'm going to, um, echo some of Tom's earlier sentiments, I. We have such a hard time getting people just to join committees. I don't, depending on how, what the makeup of that committee is and what the charges, I think would have to be very specific. We can't have the same pool of people on this committee, if it's a five-member board, seven-member board, we need to make sure that. All the voices of all the residents that have feedback for this, have an opportunity to do that, and I still struggle with how. Even a, a small appointed board, if it's just to talk about the residents' feedback, again. I feel like there's a lot of people that just don't even understand that we have committees in town, no matter what we do. That they still would not find this avenue to do that and voice what their needs are, so I think. I, I'm not saying I, we shouldn't do it, but again, I, to Tom's point that he's brought up, I don't want another committee just for the sake of doing it. I want it to have a very specific charge, goals, whatever it may be, and the, the people on that committee. Would need to be very carefully selected based on what those goals and that charge is.
I don't disagree, I think it's, again, the, how, how best to garner the public input and, and the community. From, from the diverse community, and I think, I think part of what worked with the Prop two and a half was, there was broad department. Support for the entirety of it, and I think that was one of the challenges is, I think it was a little divisive among different boards and committees. For the building project as well as among department heads, and I think ki- trying to kind of. Build a coalition of, is it perfect? No, but is this going to benefit town? Yes, and, and better communicate that, so.
Hmm.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there any other comments for Austin about his update or the special town meeting? Um, if the board is amenable to taking, I believe we have Central, Century Oil here to take, um, under new business, bu- uh. A building permit re- refund request out of order, um, because we have Century Oil here, I believe.
Yes.
Is the board amenable to, sorry, is the board amenable to that?
Amenable, sure, yeah.
Um, so I believe we have in our packet, um, that the, um. Building inspector, um, is, uh. Century Oil, I believe, has requested a refund for the building permit ish fee that was issued for the car wash at thirteen Palmagusset Road. Um, the, the project under that, the building permit that is being requested to be refunded was never started. And they had to reply, reapply for a new permit and pay all new fees.
Correct.
Um, and so the building inspector, um, and I went back and forth as to if there was a policy in place in town for it or not. Um, and there's not, and, um, the building inspector suggested that it would come before the board. Um, he is in favor of refunding the permit, um, but given the amount that it was, it, he felt that it should be a select board decision. Um, and just to reiterate that the work that was supposed to be done under that building permit was never started. Um, so effectively, that building permit was, was null and void, they had to change the name on the building permit, um, and everything, so. It couldn't just be a change of, of name, it had to be an, an all-new permit issued. Did I s- communicate that properly?
Questions?
Name and address, sorry, and then if you wanna speak, sorry.
All of Zachary Stizan, uh, speaking on behalf of thirteen Palmagusset, eight Phillips Road here in Rutland.
Um, I noticed in your letter, uh, there's a digit missing on the year. September eighteen, two thousand and twenty what?
Well, that could have been any.
I believe it was twenty three.
Any within the decade here, I had to revise that for you, I didn't pick up on that, I did, I'm reading this as you're reading it, but yeah, as well as you're right.
Okay, so, when did you pay this fee? In twenty three?
This fee, this fee was paid, um. I would have to say, we've been on this, I would say this was twenty two.
Twenty two.
I can make sure for you, I can certainly get this letter corrected, that's the first, I read this through twice today, I was like, oh, it's fine, I skimmed through it, I've been, I've been out all day just working.
I was just curious how long that money has been with us.
Oh, it's been here forever, I got a, I've got an open road permit too out there with you, um.
Um, so, nothing was ever started, you paid the fee.
Correct. Correct.
You went to your engineers.
Now, at this point, we've changed our contractors, we have another contractor that's been approved. This has been similar to town projects that I've heard here, it's been two, one step forward, two steps back.
Yeah.
So it's been a learning experience for me as well.
Okay.
Um, but we've totally changed our building contractor, who's now been, uh, been approved, which is Elite Contracting, and they filed these permits again under their own statute.
Okay, all right, so you, so you're asking this money to be refunded, because then you're gonna have to repay it again.
Exactly, out of, out of my pocket and into someone else's, or out of your pocket and into someone else's.
I- is there any way that we can, I mean, if you want the money back, I guess it's one thing, but can we transfer that money?
Sure, if you wanna do that, that would be fine, I'm not sure.
I asked my question, I, so.
If, if, I talked, sorry, I talked to Harold, and he made it sound like. Because it needed to be a new name on, on the building permit, the best way to.
I didn't think it was that easy.
The best way to do it was to issue, and there were time constraints, the best way to do it was to issue, have a new building permit issued with the new contractor.
Uh, with a new, with a new.
Have that fee paid.
Okay.
And then come before the board to have the dollar amount refunded.
However you guys wanna do it.
Um, and that was per Harold, is that?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Um, are there any other questions, um, or concerns? Again, this is kind of one of those one-offs, it doesn't usually happen, generally, building permits are pooled and there's some work going on and off. Um, and this was one of the ones that, that welcomed to.
Everyone's gonna get the car wash real soon.
Hopefully, right, hopefully.
Hopefully for the spring anyways.
We're pulling, we're pulling, we're trying to break ground within a couple weeks.
Um, so if there's no, um, other questions or concerns, we have a suggested motion, um, as printed in our memorandum. Um, that I would entertain, I move to grant a refund of four thousand three hundred thirty eight dollars to Century Oil slash Century Suds. For building permit number BP dash twenty three dash four twenty three upon the re- recommendation of the building commissioner.
Second.
And you have, I still move.
Oh, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any conversation, questions, concerns, anything?
I do have one quick question. I do have one quick question. Are there um administrative costs with the filing of the permit? Just in general?
Uh, uh, those are usually absorbed in the fee, um, the fee structure overall. I think was this paid probably through OpenGov or Viewpoint?
Yep.
Probably.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I believe the transaction fee, I think, is covered usually by the applicant, so we don't have to pay that. Um, but all the other administrative costs for staff, for example, I think are usually included in the fee altogether.
Okay.
And sorry, if I may, I believe the we had adjusted the the building permit fees um in the past calendar year, so. My understanding was that there was a increase in what was owed for the twenty twenty-four building permit fee versus what was paid.
That's right.
In the twenty twenty-three building permit fee also. Is my understanding from Harold?
I don't know. No, that's fine. I'm I'm just asking, just. I I'm I don't have any concerns with what we're doing here, but just moving forward, I don't know if it's worth. Again, documentation policy for next time, you know, is there any sort of you can get a refund less? Cause if there were additional administrative fees, they've since been paid, but we're now being refunded the entire amount, so it's. Again, I don't know if it's negligible, but just something to consider less whatever administrative, a certain set amount of administrative cost, whatever it may be, something just to think about for.
Yeah. So the way we do our fees is a little different. So we, I think we utilize viewpoint a little awkwardly, to be frank. Um, there's the initial review, um completeness review, I think is all. Um, and then, for example, the building department then sets the fee after doing the completeness review. Um, so that usually tries to incorporate a lot of the fees associated with with, for example, any additional administrative costs and any supplemental fees would then be. Almost sort of a separate fee that would then have to be refunded. Um, so for example, goes to Hong Kong, that's a separate fee and permit altogether.
Mm-hmm.
But for this, um, this was set by the building commissioner and the building department at the time. It is inclusive of. Everything, I guess, to be.
So if it had to go to any of those other boards?
It would have been additional fees. Yeah.
I was just gonna add that um they also had to get a special permit through the planning board, so they paid a fee to the planning board in order to do that as well, and that.
It wouldn't be in the building.
Permit has already been cleared as being still good.
Okay, okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Madge, I.
Waitman, I. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
And if you guys can just let Harold know that we um.
Get the work with the office so they can issue the refund to you.
Awesome. I look forward to everyone having clean cars.
Yes, thank you for the economic development, too. Um, so I don't know, I don't see anyone here for um while we're out of order. I don't see anyone here for cultural council. Appointments. I know that this needs to be done so that they can continue to work, but. Um, I also know what a stickler we are about our. Um, current board and committee policy and we don't really have any option um for them. Um, they can't, the cultural council can't meet currently because they don't have a forum, so we had two letters of interest. Um. Uh, but neither of them are here and no one from the cultural council is here. So I guess we will. Try to reach out and see if we can have them at the December sixth meeting at the at the beginning, I guess.
So I I did reach out and ask them to attend tonight. Um, in lieu of not being able to have a committee recommendation. One of the existing members did send a letter of recommendation late this afternoon that I included in your paper packets. Um, the third member that she referenced, Michelle Fay, nobody has been able to get in touch with her. Uh, so we would still be one member short of what is required under MGL. Um, they do have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday with the state. Um, to talk about how they move forward as far as the cultural council goes. Um, but you are correct in that that they are not here.
So I guess we can hold it for right now and see if they join, and if they do, then I would be amenable to taking them. Um, otherwise, I think that um. We, like I said, just knowing what a stickler this board has been, it doesn't seem right to, we've let other business.
Mm-hmm.
Not get done because of it currently, so I don't know. We can discuss as as the meeting ends, I suppose.
Okay.
Um, if the board's amenable to staying under new and special business, we have the fiscal year twenty-five stormwater utility fee. Um, is the board amenable to moving forward with that, or would you like to move back to old business? I figured just move move old business to see how much time we have left.
Okay.
Okay, so the stormwater utility fee, Austin, I believe you have prepared a memorandum for us. Do you have?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madge. I'll be brief. Um, so the memo obviously uh tries to be inclusive, I think, of the overall request and the rationale. Um, to the calculation of the recommended stormwater fee. Um, but just to give some of the highlights, um. We're trying to also be conservative in terms of our estimates for our parcel counts, very similar to the discussion that happened during the water and sewer. I think previous years, we were probably a little bit too ambitious about parcel counts, for example, for stormwater. Um, this process through the tax recap process, um, we've gone and. Uh, taken a little bit of a deep dive into our parcel counts, and I think we've realized, especially last year, that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Um, continue that needs to be done on the parcel database. For example, there were some folks that didn't get a bill that should have and vice versa. Um, so recognizing that, um, we want to scale back a little bit. I think we were. To the T last year for the amount of parcels that we got from our database. We scaled that back a little bit to approximately thirty-one hundred parcels. So the way that this fee is calculated is very simple. Budget, by the way, parcel count, you get your rate. Um, and that gets to um the, um, I think it was ninety-eight, thirty-two. Um, in the interest of being simple, we are recommending a hundred dollars.
Question, we only have, it's about three thousand parcels in town?
No, we have more than that, but thi- this is only for parcels that are developed. Um, so residential and commercial parcels that are developed. Um, last year also, um, it did not include some of the exempt properties. So for example. Um, Deveraux, um, very large parcel has several parcels, they were not included, um, some other nonprofits.
And they should have been.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so those are now included in the database, so.
Okay, I guess my question follows. We've got what, six thousand homes in Rutland?
Yeah, but only approximately four thousand, give or take, parcels. More give. Over four thousand parcels, but not all of all of those are developed, right? So it has to have um a structure on it or an impervious surface, so pretty much like a parking lot.
Okay, so.
I don't think we have six thousand homes in town. I think we have, um, I think there's that many developable parcels or more than that developable parcels, but I think. Actual like constructed homes, I believe, is in the thirty-five hundred to forty-two hundred.
Hmm, I might have been, yeah, I could have been thinking like apartment buildings, you know, in terms of households.
Oh, yeah.
You know, in terms of households, so. But in reality, we have about roughly four thousand homes in town?
Uh, parcels.
Parcels.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
So the this, when you go into the GIS database, the little lines of little property cards.
Yeah.
Those are considered parcels.
Okay.
So we have, um. Forty-four eighty-seven, um, and you know, a lot a lot of them are also considered. Um, like vacant land, so we have um eight, almost nine hundred parcels. That are vacant slash accessory land, those do not receive, um, stormwater bills are not not considered developed. Um, interestingly enough, like each of the telepho- poles are considered parcels. Those are personal properties, so those don't get, um.
Really?
Stormwater bill, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um. Just so. How did you arrive at the dollar value that you had to divide those four thousand into?
So that was the budget that was set at the annual town meeting in May. So that was the three hundred and five, seven, seven, five. That was the storm FY twenty-five stormwater budget.
Okay. And that was just a break even on the budget, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, that was to fund the full year needs of stormwater. So.
Okay.
Um, as what's mentioned in here, that's um for the first time doing, actually, we've done it three times. Um, in the past year, street sweeping, we did MS four training for all public works employees, we did catch basin cleaning, reporting. Um, culvert sampling, things like that, and we have to continue every year more requirements. So that is inclusive of all of our identified stormwater work.
And that's all kind of required by law?
Yes.
That we do all that?
Yeah. Yep, and those require.
I just saw everybody, you know, knows why.
Yeah. And I just wanna emphasize, I don't, I I I think the three oh five is gonna be a good number for the next few years. Um, but they're already talking about the next stormwater permit, um, which is gonna need more requirements. Um, we still have a few more years. I think it's a ten-year permit. Um, we have, I think it expires in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
Um, so by then, we'll already be on the next ten-year permit with more requirements. Um, and there's a lot of things that are coming down from the federal government, um, that are even more so. Um, the environment requirements are being imposed on the community, um, especially even for private developers. That we are then required to do some of their stormwater work. So those are all kind of draft mandates right now. Um, but you know, this is obviously a serious requirement from the federal government, so. That's why we had to really fully fund this obligation very quickly. Um, so jumping from the one fourteen to the three oh five, um, but it's unfortunately, it's necessary.
Okay, thank you.
And I think more and more communities, oh, sorry, correct, no problem.
Yeah, and I. Uh, no, so I did do, um, just kind of a an analysis and took a look at some of the communities that do have stormwater utilities and what their average residential rate is. Um, there's some communities that have a um a more complex rate than a than a flat rate like we have. But a lot of the average is between eighty-five and a hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, so we're kind of right in between. Um, what you do see in some of those other communities, though, is they have much more parcels. So, you know, Franklin is raising. For around the same amount of money, Franklin is raising raising almost a million dollars, just 'cause they have more property, right? Um, so this is. Pretty accurate, I think, for what Rutland's demonstrated stormwater.
And we can't charge the state for the parcel of Rutland State Park, right?
You know, we had that discussion. Um, we did, we had that disc- but you know, we also said, well, technically, the town of Rutland is an exempt property. Um, so we had that discussion about, you know, do, can we include state and local agencies? We don't believe we can. Just simply because there's stories out there that, and I don't mean to pick on the Commonwealth, but they don't even like to pay their water and sewer bills. Um, so I'd be surprised if they paid their stormwater bill. If if the board wants us to, we can send the bill, but I I think we'll be, it'll be an outstanding receivable.
Going forward, as far as nonprofits are concerned, are we looking at all nonprofits or certain nonprofits?
So.
If you're a five oh one C three, for example?
Any non- any, so let's, instead of calling it nonprofits, let's say exempt property.
Okay.
So any exempt property property that is developed will receive a stormwater bill. Um.
Let's use the church as an example.
Yeah.
They will?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So needless to say, if they do, Deveraux and everybody else will.
Yeah, okay, and 'cause the actual this this came up because they're paying water and sewer bills, so they're paying utility bills.
Yeah.
Um, and this is a utility and established under Mass General Law Utility.
Okay.
And I think if we can continue kind of the education as to what it what it covers, that I I still hear a lot of people, I don't have town water, I don't have town sewer, but I still have to pay. For wastewater and it's if we can continue that education, and I know, I think, Austin, you and I have talked about some of. Coming out of even the special town meeting, some of the budgetary stuff and everything, just. Paul, to your point, trying to do some Sunday afternoon community public information sessions for a few of these different topics, but that about local government, municipal government. Um, and when the bills go out, if we can put a. Maybe do an insert similar to how we did for the water sewer rates or something also. Um, as far as what what it what it is and that, yes, it's all developed parcels and not. Linked to your water usage or your sewer usage or whatever.
Good point.
Um, yeah, so uh we're planning on, I don't, it that the plan was actually to not to include in the tax bill is is to be a separate mailing paid for with the stormwater funds. And the reason why, um.
Education.
It's education, it gets us credit, um, on our annual permit. Um, and also, um, consulting engineering company is working on um some materials for us to be able to send out. There's some already. Like if you go into town hall, you do see some updated um stormwater materials. There's some stuff on the website. Social media, monthly newsletter that kind gets us credit, but we get a massive amount of credit if we. Do what you're suggesting, like a townwide mailer.
Okay.
Um, that actually, if you do a townwide mailer, I think that covers your education requirement for like two or three years. So you don't have to do that every year.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
But I think just, I'm still hearing a lot of.
Yeah.
Conversation about it, and I think if we can continue the education piece, um, I've also noticed that some of the culverts that were. In need of attention have gotten attention more more quickly than just until they failed. Um, I'm not sure if it was specifically from stormwater, if it's that we've had more chapter ninety money freed up and everything, but. Um, I know that that's some of the work that stormwater can do is to help some of the.
Yep.
The. Struggling culverts rather than waiting for a total failure.
Yeah. Yep.
In emergency, so. Um.
Is Worcester charging us cheaper 'cause the water's cleaner?
Um, we'll talk about that in the next session.
I'm just, you know, you know.
Um, just one quick little side comment. It's it's pretty interesting what, um, we find in the catch basins. Like people put a lot of stuff down there that they shouldn't or maybe didn't realize that they put down there, like I think we find like watches and. Cell phones and different things in there. Um, and also some things that again probably shouldn't be in there, but it's pretty interesting when they pull off the, um. I don't know, what's it called? The crate.
Grate. The grate.
The grate, not crate.
A truth.
Uh. There's this big machine that takes it.
It's like claw.
Yeah, and then puts it in kind of a bucket and then. You see the stuff that's in there, so it's kind of interesting. Um, maybe that's also a good education thing that we can have people take pictures and.
Yeah.
Um, they're working on also ways to make it easier for us to do that on our own, so. Um, right now, just because we don't have the equipment or contracting out that service. Um, but ways that we can, and that's part of the training for our DPW workers is like, you know, you see something. They all mostly have tablets in their vehicles so they can take pictures of it and report it back directly. Um, so we can just be on top of things a little bit more, so. But I think we're on a good track, especially for stormwater. We've done a lot of catch-up work over the past year.
And I know other communities are starting to, um, beginning to fund stormwater utilities. I think Paxton just did.
It just passed, yeah.
Um, right, and so.
A thought for town meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think.
They stole our language.
But I think I think for the smaller communities, some of the larger communities can fit a lot of this work in their DPW budget and. The concern was especially the years that we cut and cut and cut and cut, that this was one of the things that would always get cut, and we were falling out of.
Mm-hmm.
We weren't weren't in compliance and we were at the the threat of, and I think a lot of the smaller communities are not able to fund it. Reliably out of their DPW um budgets, so they are looking to enterprise funds, um, as a way to ensure that they're compliant. Um, I would entertain a motion to adopt a fee of one hundred dollars per developed parcel to support the fiscal year twenty twenty-five adopted budget for the stormwater utility.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other conversation, questions, considerations, concerns? Um. I have something, but it's not related to the vote, so roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Madge, I.
Waitman, I. One other thing I had heard kind of through a few people, Austin, is some individuals weren't, didn't receive a first bill for their developed parcels. Then received a a late bill that they were required to pay the late fee, but they were never issued the first bill.
Yeah.
Um, and there was no mechanism for them to, they they ended up having to pay the late fee also. Obviously, some of it may be. Word versus word, but I don't know, I hope in kind of going through it the first year, I know we've had a number of parcels that should have, to your point, should have been billed that weren't and also. Were billed that shouldn't have been, if we can just continue that work, um, and work with the community members also to encourage them. To be truthful about their bills, but also, you know, a little bit more forgiving if they legitimately didn't get a first bill.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I I just, I Weston Sampson, um, and Sue in the Biolo Committee are working on some biolo revisions, and Weston Sampson is working on. Uh, rules and regulations for the board. Um, some of that we'll talk about abavance, um, for stormwater utility. We'll actually have kind of the formal process. The past year, we kind of borrowed the water and sewer form, 'cause we didn't have one. Um, for stormwater, but we'll create one that's unique to stormwater and a policy and a regulation for that as well. Um, and then just everything else, very similar to your water and sewer rules and regs. Um, this is a utility. It deserves kind of that kind of attention, so we'll have that.
Thank you. Um, anything else for the or about the stormwater or anything? Um, I would go back into old business then, and we had a couple, um, things under old business. The select board policies for the board and committee appointments, um. Sorry, I just am trying to. Yeah, um. I know we had kind of discussed about the the, um. I know we had kind of discussed about the the um the process for which we currently are looking at um the the boards and committees appointments, I think tonight is a point in case where we have letters of interest, um we can't have a chair recommendation. Um but we haven't been able to move on these situations because instances because of members aren't here. I do think that there's value to having um applicants attend or something so that the board can interview or ask questions or anything, but it seems like it's recently been a formality, just have people here and not necessarily actually engage them. Um so I think that that was one of my big things, um so I think Tamika has highlighted some of the um.
Yeah, I so I highlighted the changes um that I made based on the discussion at the last meeting. The only piece that I added in that did come from the board and if it's acceptable to you was on the top of this the back page, I added in that the resignation must be certified by the town clerk because that's the process that we follow, we don't usually bring it to you guys until we have that certification.
Okay. I I do have a question for the board. Going back to policy on the third uh sec- first bullet line. Written recommendation from the relevant board or committee. How does the board view that statement? To me, it says everybody who's on the committee or the board has to sign that letter because it's board or committee and it's not specifying a particular person like a chair. So in some cases, if you don't have everybody there that can't sign when you're doing it, that could be a problem, so I'm just trying to get some clarification there.
For me, it's kind of how we handle most other things is it's majority of the board or committee and a a letter through a letter from the chair or the or the clerk or the secretary, recording secretary or some some communication that that this was discussed at this meeting and a majority vote was taken in support of this person. Um again, this also um states that the board, meaning the select board, shall take into consideration any and or all of the following. Um not that it's a requirement to have uh in order to be appointed. Um but to Harry, to your point, um that's how I view it is. And I think that's how most boards and committees, Tamika correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at you because you work a lot with like conservation and and stuff.
I write most of them, yes, we usually um like I will write a letter on behalf of the board once they make their take their vote and then I usually always document who the voting members were in that letter and then that's the letter that I usually send to you guys.
So should, and again, not not trying to be picky here, but written recommendation uh from the majority of the relevant board or committee and signed by all or the chair. I I mean, I don't want to see that be confusing in the future. That needs to be in black and white to me.
I I agree, and I think um I I'm looking at the the procedure on the back as well, which I think is semi-related, the highlighted item that says residence, uh sorry, no, the one below that. Um the select board must receive the board or committee's written recommendation on the appointment and the letter of interest from the resident prior to making the appointment. I still I I think we're still missing a discussion of the board or committee so that the board or committee as a whole can make a recommendation and I agree with you, Harry, I think I think it should be, we can add it in, I I whatever ever anybody's thoughts are, my thought is as long as it comes from the board, whether it's the chair, after the board has discussed it and voted, whether it comes from the chair or the board designates a particular board member to write the letter and sign it, I think that's fine, as long as it's been discussed and agreed upon who they feel would be the best fit. But I feel like those two pieces are missing, there's the the board discussion on who might be best fit and then to your point, Harry, the clarification of who the letter needs to come from.
I mean, I don't have a problem either way, if you if everybody has to sign it on the board, that's fine and the majority has to sign it, I don't care. If the chair signs, I don't care, but somebody has to be responsible, not just quote the term committee. Somebody has to be responsible in that letter that comes before the board.
Well, would the word quorum be acceptable?
I I would just say even just a written recommendation from the chair or board designee.
Okay, that works.
Then it leaves it a little bit flexible.
Sure.
And add in somewhere again that the re- the recommendation needs to
Follow discussion.
Follow discussion and a a quorum vote.
So would we agree that written recommendation from the relevant board or committee signed by the chair or its designee, or the chair's designee?
Well, board, a a board, like if the board votes and says I vote for Paul to write the letter.
Or board, yeah. A little too.
Then I think that's fine, as long as they vote for somebody
Right.
to write the letter.
I mean, it's in the back here, it says you really should attend the meeting anyways, you gotta be there so the board gets to see you and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Right, Mike?
I mean, what if I change the language to um written recommendation from the board or from the, excuse me, from the chair or the board's designee following a discussion of the interested parties at a public meeting and a majority vote of the board or commission?
Works for me.
That sounds, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Very good, works for me.
Okay, thank you.
We'll give you gold star for that one.
Um I think somewhere, Tamika, somewhere in here, and this just came up um in a different conversation in my brain, um is I believe in the past um the town clerk is responsible for confirming um that any uh interested party is a registered voter in town. Um and I don't, I'm I don't, I didn't look at this to look for that because it just came into my head, but um I I we've gotten hung up before by trying to appoint members who weren't registered voters in town.
Yeah.
Um and so I don't know if it's, I don't see it here quickly, um what that process is to ensure that before they're essentially brought before, I mean, they could become registered voters, right? But before it's brought to the select board for the appointments that that it's checked that they are registered voters.
So I might recommend that that's something that we add to the application online um where it's a similar to after our discussion last time, I added there on there, have you attended at least one meeting of the board committee?
Yeah.
We can also add, are you a registered voter? If not, you must be one to be appointed. Um and then that will also trigger a reminder to the office staff and we can add it in here to confirm with the town clerk that they really are a registered voter.
I I I have concerns about the registered voter requirement, I don't think it's very inclusive. I think that there's some folks that live in town that can't register to vote, um they may be legal residents.
Yep.
Um and I think could also serve on a committee, so I think maybe changing that to resident um rather than registered voter.
Okay.
Just because I I do think we have members of the community that would be great board members, but they're probably not able to be registered, right?
Excuse me, there is a town bylaw that says they must be a registered voter.
Okay.
To serve on any appointed committee.
Well, I disagree with the bylaw.
See, that isn't the answer, it's asked twice at town meeting.
So yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So we can add that as a consideration to update the bylaw.
Yeah, I think it's something that's definitely changed, because I don't think it's very inclusive at all.
No, and I I And I agree one hundred percent, I knew somewhere that it was because we've gotten hung up in the past by trying to appoint
Yeah.
individuals who weren't
Yeah.
registered voters specifically.
And most often, it's just been residents that are brand new to town and they just haven't changed, you know, changed their status.
Yeah.
Right. But
And also like students.
Right, but to your point.
You know, we have like, we have students that are employees of the town.
Right.
But they couldn't serve on a board or committee.
Because they're not registered, they're not able to be registered to vote, right?
Yeah.
And and I agree because there are
So even the bylaw is kind of funky, because they can work for the town, but they can't volunteer for the town.
Right, right. Right, and so maybe that's a consideration that we ask the bylaw committee to review that bylaw as one of their
Yeah.
considerations.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, thank you, Peter, but um.
Yeah, like I said, I know I saw it somewhere.
I know, I was gonna say, I knew it was somewhere, but I didn't know where.
Right, and so if we can maybe Tamika for right now, because it is a bylaw, if we can add it to the the checklist and that way we just before anything comes to the select board, they either know that they need to be registered or they need to register or or whatever, um and at least until or if we can have the bylaw changed.
Sure.
One thing I notice on here too is there's no end date. So we have at least fourteen days prior to the select board meeting for vacancies to be posted, but what does that mean?
Well, I think it's hard to put an end date because you don't know if you'll get anybody. So you could post something for those fourteen days, but then you don't get an interested party for say three months after that.
But what but what I'm saying is prior to having a meeting, you must have the application in by a certain date. It must be in by three days prior to a selectmen's meeting for your appointment, something I'm talking about, end date. Otherwise, it can just go on and on.
Well, I think it would go on until you fill the position, I think it's this is just, this is a way of saying there's a minimum amount of time to keep it open for applications if there's seats open. So you can't just get two applications in the first two days and then fill them without waiting to see if there's other interested parties. But if it stays open, like if like Tamika said, if if there's a vacancy and you can't fill it for three months.
Well, I don't mean that, I mean
You can fill it at any time if there's an interested party.
Right. Say you have, say you have two applicants and then the day of it, somebody fills out another application.
Oh, the day of the select board meeting?
They like is there, shouldn't be a date there that three days prior to the meeting, if we have applications, it closes, that type of thing.
Why, I would say at that point, they're not on the agenda to be considered for appointment because the agenda's already been set.
Corrected, it is already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I love that we can change it anytime.
Yeah.
Yeah, so but, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand what you mean now, though.
And I mean, I think in the in the intent of encouraging interested residents in residents interested in serving to attend at least one meeting of the board or committee that they're interested on in serving on um and attending the select board meeting at which the appointments are made, I think both of those kind of are are helpful in hat preventing some of that
Mm-hmm.
three days, forty eight hour before or whatever.
Yeah, and our office tries to do a really good job of communicating with people when they first reach out to acknowledge their letter of interest and um I try to explain what that process looks like and how long it takes and what's expected of them. Um and then also regards to your discussion at the last meeting, um we did add a spot where people can upload their resume as well, so if they'd like to submit that with it, there's an option for them to do that.
I I do have one question, I'm I'm curious on if what if they submit their letter of interest, but then they never attend a board meeting for that that board?
Then I would not, then I would not bring it to the board.
Okay, because that's that's
Well, I think if Sorry, go ahead.
Can we just not, I mean, because if if we're on a a committee or a board, I I think we've all had that conversation where we would not be comfortable appointing somebody without having that conversation, getting some discussion going to see if we agree that they would be if if the, first of all, if the board or committee is is what they're expecting it to be, if the work that they're doing.
Well, it says, yeah, it it must attend, so under the procedures to fill vacancies, you must attend at least one meeting or you're not considered to fill the vacancy.
Yeah. Right, so is there like any, is that is that enough for, like obviously the board or commission would be notified that there's interest, do they keep it on
Yes.
how many meeting agendas as a potential discussion topic before we say, okay, they haven't attended? We're not gonna add this to the agenda anymore and they're gonna have to reapply. I mean, I guess it depends on how often
Do they
Yeah, it's tough.
Do they put it in their minutes?
Oh, yes, yep, it would be, it would be documented in the minute, I mean, you know, like there's some boards that meet biweekly, but then there's others like RDIC or EDC that are monthly.
Okay, so Okay.
Right.
Um for me, if something is not ready, excuse me, sorry, to be brought before the board, I just wouldn't bring it to you. So if they hadn't checked all those boxes, I wouldn't bring it before you.
Okay.
Um but
So maybe it's, I like, maybe it's less of a this is more of a select board policy for appointing, right?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
It's a less uh procedure for the actual committees that
Yeah.
need the person, what they would do.
So I know from our standpoint from the office, when we receive a letter of interest, um the first thing we do is reach out to the app- the applicant and say thank you for your interest. Um we encourage you, this was before as a requirement to attend a meeting of this board or commission, this is the next date and time. And then their letter of interest is forwarded to the board to then add it to their agenda so that they can have a discussion with that person. It most of the times people are good and they'll say, oh, I I can't make it to that meeting, so then we coordinate it for the next meeting. So it's kind of more of a behind the scenes thing, and so I would say now that you guys are making it a requirement that they attend a meeting, I I would argue that it just wouldn't come before you guys until they had checked all those boxes.
Until they had done, okay, right, and then it'll be up to the individual committees to hopefully work with whoever
Yeah. Yes, because the whole is they want to fill that seat and they'll work expeditiously that to do that.
Okay. Okay.
Good.
Um and we, I think the consensus of the board and I know I is that the resident residents interested in serving must attend the select board meeting at which the appointment is made, I think we decided that because we have the Zoom options and we try to be minimal as to when we take people for the appointments, um.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, can I just ask a question on that?
Yeah.
My my question is, do you feel the same way about reappointments specifically during um like the reappointment season? Do you feel it necessary that existing members who are being reappointed come to the meeting? Do you want that to be the case for everybody or only for new people that you haven't met before?
So I would say, I would say because our select board could change every year, that there's value to having the re- even the reappointments.
Good question.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah. Yeah.
Um I do struggle a little bit in the sense of, I think there were a couple of boards and committees that we didn't appoint on the first time and there were a couple subsequent meetings that I think if we've met the person once um at a meeting that they were originally scheduled and for whatever reason the appointments were held or or whatever. Um I don't know, I struggle a little bit within making everyone be back at the next appointments meeting.
I I see, I I understand, but at the same time, like you said, the board could change and I, how do you know if, you know, this year, I've been on the committee for five years already and I'm gonna be reappointed, but this year, the board's all changed and has new people, I I feel like it should just be a blanket
Be there, and especially, I mean, I guess with the Zoom option and everything, it's
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully they can.
um
Plus, I mean, if you're appointed on, when you're on that rotation, it's three years.
Right.
So you really don't have to show up for three years.
Okay.
Well, it depends on the board, summer, summer year, summer five years, it depends on the board, but yeah, to your point, it's not a guarantee that it's gonna be every year.
So
Summer one, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I I would also, you know, we've we've done a lot of work with adding to the policies about, you know, we want to encourage new participation, so even if it's somebody up for reappointment, if there's other people that are also interested. And I I just think it would be value to have that conversation on who the
And I think, I think there is value to, I think historically, everyone has assumed that because I've served on this board or committee and I want to continue, that I'm almost a shoo-in because of a reappointment.
Shoo-in, yeah.
And I think if we can, to Jen's point and I think to all of our points, if we can garner some new interest from a variety of residents, that that shouldn't necessarily be the case, you know, I have this pie in the sky dream where we have a a pile of willing volunteers and that every appointment season um we, you know, a lot of communities have kind of competitive appointments. Um and so I think even moving away from kind of the term reappointment and just appointments in general, um is
I agree, I mean, shame on us if we take the same people for fifteen years when we've got other people who can upgrade, shame on us.
Yeah.
I, yeah. Should be pushing for new voices, new faces, yeah, I agree.
So
I like that idea, I won't call it reappointment next year.
It's hard, though, but yeah.
Just appointments, yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah. So, but, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So with the kind of proposed edit for that written recommendation pa- um bullet under the policy um part on the first page and then the additions um that we had spoken about previously in the conversation tonight, is the board comfortable with this, again, this is policy, so we can always revisit it if we decide that it's not um if it needs to be tweaked or whatever, um but is the board comfortable um like I said, with the the amendment Tamika has written for us and everything else?
I I'm I'm comfortable with the policy, I I I have a question regarding the website in terms of what we're looking for and the definition of that particular individual. What's the skill level, but as far as this is concerned, I'm comfortable with this, how we advertise for the position.
So do you want to talk about that now before we will to adopt this um with the amendment, or do you want to, are you comfortable adopting it um as presented with including the amendment that we had made tonight?
No, I'm comfortable just adopting it, I mean, I I I that's a No, I'm comfortable just adopting it. I mean, I I I that's another discussion issue.
Oh, my.
How we try to get people, but I'm okay with this.
Okay. So then I I wanna entertain a motion to adopt the revised board and committee appointment policy as presented and inclusive of the um written recommendation um amendment.
So. Told. I was just blowing my throat. Oh, alright.
Motion, is there a second? Second. Paul and Jen, any other conversation?
Yeah.
Roll call Harry.
Sakman, I.
Mattson, I.
Walter, I. Walter, I. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamika.
Thank you, Tamika. Um and then do we feel comfortable working through um the we have about ten minutes before eight o'clock. Do we feel comfortable trying to work through a little bit more of the special act? My hope was to kind of get at least the policy and the special act kind of through select boards first pass so that we could move them off the agenda and put focus more on additional policies. Um I believe we had left off on, we had covered through section three, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Um and so then we had asked to just kind of continue um at least through four, five and six, if not the entire of the um entirety of the special act. Because as we kind of learned going through the first three sections, it was really better to look at it comprehensively.
Yeah.
Um I do have, um I know uh in the middle of November, Tim Narwalt had also emailed us comments um for that. This has not again gone to any other elected boards or committees yet because I felt that having the select board go through everything and have kind of um take out, we had made some significant changes, I believe in the in the first couple sections. And then um having legal kind of just look at it to make sure legally it was still okay and then send it to the other elected boards and committees for for feedback and and public comment as well. Um I mean, obviously, we have public comment opportunities throughout the process, but.
Yeah.
Um quick question for um I believe it was mentioned at a prior meeting that we were gonna make all these changes and then you were gonna submit them.
Yeah.
But I guess I have a question of what the attorney's opinion would be if we take all of these things out on que- section two.
Oh, I do have the list of questions drafted that you guys had come up with at the last the last time we discussed it. That is one of them as to whether or not that that they've seen that happen in other communities. Um but I think we had agreed that we weren't going to send the email until you finished everything just to be a little bit more fiscally prudent, I suppose. Um so I have not, I have it, I just haven't sent it yet.
Okay, cuz I was good cuz this is such a big section here.
Yeah, yeah.
That I didn't know if he said, no, you can't take everything out, then we gotta start all over again on this.
No, yeah, so they haven't reviewed it, but I I one hundred percent have that one on there.
And.
Okay.
Harry, I think we had conversation back and forth cuz it says in that's it said the grounds for which a recall may be initiated include but are not limited to.
Limited to, right.
Right.
So I think we had decided dis de determined that likely it was not gonna be an issue because it was um inclusive but not limited to.
Right, right, right. I was just curious as to whether
Right.
if there is any major changes, what it would do, bring it back to the board, that's all.
Yeah.
Uh okay, so moving on.
So for section four, um this is kind of upons once the town clerk um receives the and certifies the the petition, um the pro- the process.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, this is all how many how many signatures do you actually need to get to move forward with?
Right.
The recall election.
Right. And so I think in the first we had discussed upping the number from a get what it was fifty to was it two up to two fifty because that's what it requires to call special
Yeah.
um town media or a special town meeting, so we decided that that was a good threshold. Um and then this is once the once those kind of two hundred and fifty signatures are certified, what the the process looks like um.
Well, no, that the first one per section three is just you need two hundred and fifty signatures just to get the additional signature papers
Right.
to support the recall.
Yes.
Right.
Right, right.
So this one, so that's two hundred, you need two fifty just to to initiate the recall.
Right.
And then section four is the actual signatures to invoke the the actual recall, so that one is where it's saying ten percent. So for us right now, it'd be about seven hundred and fifty nine
Yeah.
signatures required.
Right, we set the bar pretty high on two fifty. I mean, a lot of stuff that I that I look at
Just for the initial one, yeah. Yeah.
is fifty.
Yeah.
Or a hundred, so we set the bar pretty high, which
Yeah.
I don't know if it's right or wrong, but it it keeps.
Well, I mean. We talked about, I mean, it's it's for certain, you know, it's for grievous things that you want and you want to people to understand that this isn't just because
Yeah.
you didn't like how somebody voted.
Right.
This is for something truly bad.
Right.
Um but you know, so I think it's having the higher threshold is is good and it shows the, you know,
No, I agree. Yeah.
you you need to garner enough support to, you know, if you truly feel that way. So I think for section four, my my biggest one was just what's the the best number of signatures required to move forward with the the recall election and I'm I I think the ten percent is a a a pretty good
Mm-hmm.
number.
I like that, yeah.
Only because, I mean, it we're talking about local elections here and how many people generally show up for local elections? Just over a thousand?
Right.
Maybe fifteen hundred if it's a really big issue and this is.
I mean, it's.
So you're you're tapping almost half your voter base.
Almost. Half your actual voters, so that's
Yeah.
a pretty significant number, even though it's only ten percent of the registered.
Yeah.
Um.
And I think having a percent is the best method because that tracks that changes with your
Yeah. Your population.
your population, right? And so if you have an increase or decrease, it
Yeah. Yeah.
it tracks.
Uh 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 can somebody explain to me under section four, subsection three? Demand the recall of the name and officer elect to be subject to recall. How does that even work, demand the recall? What does that mean?
I think that's just what's on the petition itself. It's just stating that you're basic it it's just you're calling for a recall, yeah.
You're calling for a recall essentially. I think.
That's just the legal jargon.
Okay.
That you're you're requiring the lea- the recall of X person, yeah.
You're requesting. You're requesting the recall.
And what the grounds for that recall are. It's to me that it's just essentially providing all the information so that when you're asking people to sign for it, they know who they're signing to recall and why.
And I think demand is a another like a more um authoritative way to say to to the town clerk and to select board
Yeah.
and to the community that this is this is the will of the voters or this is the will of the people.
Right.
So this stuff here applies to the ten percent rule. All of this, so we've gotten by the two fifty, so this now we are demanding after we've did our two hundred and fifty, now we can demand the name be recalled, the individual.
Mm-hmm.
And it has to meet the ten percent criteria after that, okay. Okay.
And they have twenty one days.
Yeah.
Whoever the petitioners are, they have twenty one days to collect the ten percent of their signatures, so.
Boy, that's fast. That's not a lot of time.
Yeah.
I can tell you when I'm getting my signatures, that's a little bit of time.
And then it also calls the clerk shall uh forthwith submit the recall petition to the board of registers or voters, which um or I think there's a typo in there, which board within five business days after receipt. Um certifying and writing the number of signatures, which are names of voters in town as the date the recall affidavit was filed.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So that's a si- that's similar to certifying the the signa- the certification of all the signatures.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does this have to go to the attorney general?
This would.
To be certified? Or?
The vote.
The signatures?
The act itself.
Yes.
Yeah, the act itself, yeah. Yes, to go through.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
But this.
No, this goes to legislature, signed by the governor.
It's a special act, legislature. Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I was like this is a special act, so it's
Yeah.
Okay. Hmm?
It would be it would be a petition to the to the legislature, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Um
Yeah.
then is there anything else under section four? We're comfortable with the ten percent and kind of the process. I think we just wanna check kind of the the language, especially in that last sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not sure, it just seems like it.
Yeah, that which board piece?
Yeah. Within five and then just continue certifying and writing there on the number of signatures, which are names of voters, just to make sure that the language of that last sentence is.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. The last sentence in section four.
Yeah, I think we might need to take out which board after registers or voters, which board.
Okay.
Um and then for section five. Um this is once the board of registers um has certified the select board give will give written notice.
Mm-hmm.
Um again, because the select board is the board responsible for calling.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, it just says if we're gonna hold another election within a certain amount of time, we can hold it uh to that election date.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if it's more than ninety calendar days, yeah.
Right, yeah.
If there's if there's an upcoming
That's the way I think of it.
one already scheduled. Yeah, but this is the one that says that the select board will notify the officer whose recall is being sought.
Right. Right.
Um. And if a vacancy occurs in the said office after a recall election has been so ordered, the elections still nevertheless proceed
Yeah.
as in this section provided, so even if the
Yeah.
the um recalled officer, the potentially recalled officer is no longer in office, the the election would still proceed, is that my understanding?
Right.
Well, I have the 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 first part of it is if they if they resign within five business days of the certification, then that's that's it, no re- no election, recall election would be called.
Right.
But if uh if I had a time I can go with that. If a vacancy occurs inside office after. Oh, yeah, because if if the say somebody or said person resigns after the election's already been ordered.
The election continues.
It continues, it just not gonna have turnout attention, so, okay.
Right.
I I don't have any concerns with.
Um just I wanna because we have Tim's comments after in the first sentence um town clerk shall submit with the clerk's cer- certification there into the select board without delay. Um he had made a comment, Tim had made a comment that there needs to be a time limit for this. Um I don't know historically for communication between town clerk and select board for official documentation purposes, what the time line is. Um.
We can ask legal that if there's a time plan, should be
Right.
defined for that too.
Yeah, I don't know what's re- I mean, once it's certified, I would assume to me, without delay means essentially as soon as it's certified, it's transmitted to the to the office.
As soon as it's certified, yeah. Yeah.
Um but I don't know.
Well, I don't, yeah, the select board shall forthwith give written notice to the elective officer whose recall is being sought, if the officer sought to be removed does not resign within five business days of him being notified or him being certified. So if it's the five days to be certified, then the select
But I think it's.
then the town clerk has to notify us within five days or whatever.
Well, I think it's I think it's the select board doesn't know any officially doesn't know anything about it until we get certified notice from
I'm trying to read that.
the clerk's office.
Right.
Um and then it's on the select board to provide written notice to the elected officer. And then once that written notice is provided, um it's within five business days. So if we were to call a special meet, if we were to hold it until our next reg- regular scheduled meeting,
Right.
then it would be five days from that if we were to call a special meeting to request notification, or is it just a process that once we the office receives it from the town clerk's office.
I think it's I think it's.
It goes directly to the.
Yeah, we don't have to call the meeting within five days, it's just that recall, the the subject of the recall has five days to resign, or if not, the board has to move forward and schedule
What if you say
The election.
So.
by the next regularly scheduled meeting? If it doesn't have a specific timeframe, what if it is that a reasonable timeframe to just essentially add it to the next agenda?
Well, I'm wondering. I'm wondering process wise, if the board is required to notify the elected official.
I think that speaks to the question you had in, I forget, it was either section one or two cuz that's one of the ones on the list as to whose responsibility is it, is it the select board or the town clerk to notify this person that this process has started?
Because I think in the earlier questions, we were asking if as soon as there's a a
Someone pulls the papers.
Right, yeah. Should that person be notified? This is speaking to once the papers are pulled and the ten percent of voters' signatures are acquired. I guess my question is for the select board to provide notice, is it required for the select board to hold a meeting? Or is it just
Or will it come to the office?
Right, exactly, like once the office receives it, is it kind of like a stamp check in and then disseminated to the select board as well as the the elected official?
Doesn't sound like we have a time requirement. The select board shall forthwith give written notice to the said elected officer, but it doesn't say when. It could be if our meeting is today and we get notified tomorrow, we can wait two weeks
Right.
to provide that notice.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it doesn't state how
Getting back to the delay that Tim was talking about.
much time. Doesn't state how much time for the notification. Yeah, like is it something where, like you said, if it comes to the office, can the office notify said elected officer? Does it have to come to a board meeting and the board has to sign a letter stating?
Maybe that's a question for legal, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm thinking even for like the
Yeah.
Yeah.
Policy question.
the chapter sixty one A notifications and everything, it's not like
Yeah.
it's like as soon as the office, as soon as town clerk receives it, then it's just automatically disseminated to the
Correct.
per MGL boards and committees and then per policy additional.
And the clock starts.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if if we aren't needing to authorize the notice, if it's spelled out in the special act that the the select board notifies the
Mm-hmm.
the elected official, then to me, that would just come from the office.
Yeah, maybe there's like a blanket letter that gets drafted and approved by the board and then
Right, right.
if the situation arises, you know that that's the letter that's disseminated, I can I can ask that.
And it goes and I would say it would go to the board
Yep.
and the elected official and probably I would say CC the town clerk just for time time documentation.
Right. Cuz it's just the notification piece, it's not the scheduling, the scheduling of the
Right.
Right.
um election would go to the next meeting.
Yep.
Also, yeah, I think that would make sense if we can clarify that.
And then you would also like to know if once the signatures are certified,
Yeah.
if there needs to be a specific timeframe for notification outside of the without delay.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Or what kind of that quote without delay is, is to me, it's as soon as, you know, it's normal business, once town clerk
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
certifies, then it gets transmitted, but I don't know what that should be right away.
Yeah.
Looks like. Um and then the other comment Tim had was in relation to however, if any other town election is to incur within the one hundred days after the date of said cer- certificate, the board, select board may at its discretion postpone the holding of the recall election to the date of such other election at which the question of recall shall appear on a separate special election ballot. He made a comment that these documents and meetings need to be public, not executive session. Um but this isn't
Which don't.
th- this isn't like a select board investigating
No.
investigatory thing, it's just select board is.
You know. The MGL dictates what's an executive session.
Right, and this is just the setting of the the dates essentially, so um.
Yeah. I would assume anybody could go to the town, yeah.
I would assume it would be a public argument if the residents are gonna vote on it.
Anybody could go to the town clerk and ask if petition papers had been pulled or filed, right?
Right, and then I would assume it would be up to whatever body to do the advocating for or against the recall, right? Like it's not
Right, like it's not it's not the select board, like we're not involved until it comes before us
We're not holding a hearing.
to notify a person if the petition has enough signatures, so.
And we're not holding a hearing to decide on the merit of.
Right.
It's procedural, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right, yep.
Right.
So there's nothing.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Cuz now that I'm thinking in my head, how do how do we ensure that the residents understand why this person has petitioned for this uh for this elected official to be recalled?
That's all on the papers, they have to provide their reason.
So they have to provide their reasoning and that, okay.
Have to provide their reason for recall.
Right.
Okay.
As part of the petition papers, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then I think it's similar to any other election in the sense of it's private or. private or um like Office of Campaign Finance formed committees that are advocating for or against.
If they wanna do that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it then becomes a political question.
Um, and not. Right. Right, I was like, but it's not a board stance or a board investigation, or even a town clerk stance or investigation, it's this is just the procedural piece.
Yeah.
No. Yeah. Procedural piece, exactly, yeah.
Is my understanding.
So I can, I understand where Tim's coming from, but at the same time, I, the select board would provide no position on it other than to call the meeting if everything goes through the process correctly, so.
Right. 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 And if if whatever.
Only election, I mean.
Yeah. Because executive session is executive session.
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't think it would be up to the town or the board to provide public email blasts that this is happening, I think that's all.
Right. And I would say if the.
Up to whomever, whomever is in invoking the petition, it would be up to them to garner their support for.
Right. And if whomever is invoking the petition is using released executive session me- meeting minutes or whatever for that, then that that is, those are legal public documents.
Mm.
But it couldn't, it would be unethical to utilize solely executive session material that hasn't been released
Released.
to be utilized.
I would agree, absolutely.
Is that
Yeah.
my understanding of executive session?
Yep.
Um. And then on the next page, um fa- if the successor fails to take office within ten business days after receiving notification of their election, the office shall be deemed vacant and shall be filled in accordance in accordance with law. Tim just made a comment to state the M- the MGL that 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 fits, but I think that is dependent on what the elected position is, how it can be filled, I'm I think so.
Mm.
You're on section six now.
Uh, oh, sorry. Yes, I am, sorry. Sorry. Um, so sorry to go back to section six, does the board have any questions or comments on um section six?
I'm good with that.
This is just stating that the incumbent, the uh
Mm-hmm.
the recalled person remains in office until the election. Um, if the official is not recalled, the incumbent shall continue. Um. And if the office official is recalled, the official will be removed um upon the election of their success for ex- their successor. Um, which ironically could be themselves, right? This has happened in the past, right, there's been a successful.
I think that's I think that's part of what's in here is
Right.
it's written in here that they shall not be
Okay.
a candidate to succeed himself, so that's, I think that was a discussion area.
Okay, good. Yep. Thank you.
Um. Yeah, they would be removed upon the election of their successor, and the successor will only hold office for the remainder of the unexpired term.
Mm-hmm.
So if they get recalled, there's only six months left, that's all they serve until the next election, so.
Yep. And.
Yes, I don't have any other issues with six.
Um. Paul, Harry, do you have any questions about six? Again, I think Tim's comment was about citing the MGL, but I believe based on which the elected position is um dictates a little bit the process.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I know even not for recall, but even for filling school committee, elected school committee members is a different procedure than um
Yeah.
Hmm.
select board or or something, so.
And I know that was one of your questions as well, is if school, this does apply to school committee members, so that's on the list.
Yes, yeah, confirm that, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, we are fifteen minutes over, do we feel like we can get through seven, eight, nine, or is there a lot of um?
I'll have just some discussion on probably eight and nine.
Okay. Do.
So, we can hold that for the next one, I think.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I was, I'm comfortable to get going if we think we can get to a point that we're comfortable kind of asking, sending it to legal, but if um I I wanna.
I mean, if everybody wants to power through, that's fine, but.
Um, I guess, I mean, on our agenda, it did specifically say four, five and six, so um we can hold and then just add seven, eight, nine for just power through.
Yeah, we should be able to get through that.
Um. I still don't see anyone for the cultural council appointments. Um, what's the board's pleasure on that, knowing um that we have the existing policy and the um newly adopted policy and no one from here is, no one from there is in attendance. Are we comfortable just holding that for the till the sixteenth and asking for again?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we should try to get that committee organized somehow, but hold it till the sixteenth.
Okay. Um, and then is there any other, are there any other future agenda requests? I know we have a few kind of, um, I think Jen's been asking for a a kind of retrospective with planning board as far as process for uh zoning bylaw changes, um and I think more general for just warrant article placement for the select board in general, but specifically the process for zoning bylaws um and how that looks. Um, and I think we'll probably try to coordinate that in the beginning of the new year with planning board. Um, but is there anything else?
Um, I'd also like to bring back around the discussion on um meeting minutes for committees. There's a lot of holes still. I know Tamika sent out some reminders about getting meeting minutes posted. Um, I just went through and spot checked today, and there's a couple, like the new bylaw committee, then the council on aging, and were two that stood stood out to me that have no meeting minutes at all posted. Um. So I just wanted to bring that discussion back around to see if there's some board statement or policy that we can help make sure that the committees are aware that we're legally obligated to have these posted and that.
And we're talking about committees that don't have Tamika, right?
I guess. Yeah, um, and I don't know if that involves, you know, a specific process, a a format, a submission, like I know some people post, Ben posts some, you post some, like maybe there needs to be a consistent process with where they get sent and who can do the posting, if people just don't know what that is.
I mean, it, being the clerk taking the notes is a tough job if you don't have somebody like Tamika, it's a very tough job. Luckily in our committee, uh Chris does a great job. Uh, so we're fortunate, but I can understand why other committees have problems, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I I don't know if it's not getting the right clerk in the place or not having them understand what their duties are. I'm not sure.
Well, and maybe that's, you know, also a I don't I don't know, like I said, it we're talking about the whole appointment process, you know, we need the right people on and we need, you know, you have to have your officers, and if you have a clerk, that clerk needs to understand what
Right.
And.
Right.
is involved with that, it does, it's not just a title to have, you have a job.
I think some of the conversation also has been kind of how to onboard new people to to boards and committees and kind of what the what that looks like, um even if it's just like a one or two, you know, one page front and back kind of intro or or for, you know, for.
No, we've asked the clerk's office to provide um new appointees with the open meeting law presentation, which does include the basics of at the very minimum of what needs to be included under open meeting law in minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I I think if you look at the agendas, you'll see that the approval of the meeting minutes is on there, but then I don't know where that breakdown is of of where they go
Yes.
after they get approved.
Yeah.
And maybe it's just there's not clear communication that it needs, they need to get mailed to you know, the town clerk's office or or whatever, to your point, Jen.
Right. To.
Yeah.
Um, and I, maybe there's benefit to expanding who can actually do the legal postings, I don't believe anywhere in MGL or anywhere, it's specified that it can only be done through the clerk's office. Um, and so I know during some of the busy, busy seasons, there's been gaps in things getting posted just because the clerk's office has been so busy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and and staffing constraints, and so if there's a process for which you know, like the executive assistant can post also or or s- or something, um, to prevent that breakdown.
Yeah. Um, so I have that one, and then um just so it doesn't fall off, I wanted to just mention the welcome sign policy again.
Mm-hmm.
I know we had left it with EDC to review and provide feedback, and they've met a couple of times and it hasn't been on any of their agendas, so I just wanted to see how long we wanted to wait.
So I reached out to them and asked, um, and I believe, I'm not one hundred percent sure that they're meeting in December, but I think if they are, their next scheduled meeting it, are you meeting?
January.
So you're not meeting until January?
Correct.
Alright, cause I had asked if they, when the next scheduled meeting was, and all I got was it should be December eighteenth or whatever, but I could, I was at your meeting and I couldn't remember if you were meeting in December or not.
Yeah, we decided that to have it December.
Um, because I do think that there's value, we have them and we've asked them um to review it, but to your point, Jen, it's been
Mm.
a few months since we've done it, and I've gotten some pushback now with the ROTC signs attached to the um
Yeah.
at least one, if not two of the the
ROTC signs?
the ROTC
ROTC.
the ROTC um banners have are attached definitely at the Hubbardston Town Line one, and there's another one.
Are they new?
I haven't seen those yet. Yes.
They've been up for a while, I think Tom had mentioned a couple times, and then I've gotten some more community feedback, just that they're not paying, like they're not paying for it.
We've never heard. Yeah.
Um, and I'm not sure
We haven't heard that.
where the other ones are, so I'm not sure if we can ask DDPW to take them down, I don't, because they're not paying for it, they're not, um, I don't know.
They're taken down.
But I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I I I, and I would say not only because it's RO- not not because it's ROTC, but just any
Any anything.
any entity that had put up a banner, because those are paid for spots, that that they shouldn't.
On our sign duty?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I would say they should definitely be removed if they weren't approved to be up there.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I have that one, and then I think my last one we kind of touched on was if there's any
Yeah.
I was kind of hoping we would see something on the agenda for this week, not that I know it to spend it out, but if there's any unobligated at this point ARPA funds. You have to do that by the end of the year, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, um, so we believe actually the the motion, the directive that came from the board um actually checked with Donna the account today to see what her thoughts were, but um I think the way that you guys gave the final guidance was to make sure that all of it is obligated by the end of the year.
Right.
And what we did was essentially allocate that towards some sort of a general fund expense to turn it into free cash. Uh, the the expense was the school assessment, so um we don't believe that you have to obligate anything because of the way that you kind of phrased that motion during that discussion, that if there's anything outstanding, we'll pay the next school assessment and turn it into free cash, so it doesn't have to be
Okay.
revoted. Unless you choose to have that discussion, reobligate funds, let me know and we can discuss that, but.
I think the consideration was that
Hmm.
given right now that it was already December second, and to have it obligated by the end of December was going to be tough
Mm-hmm.
anyway, especially given that we hadn't had any conversation as to where it was gonna go.
Right.
Um, and even if we kind of conceptually had an idea of wanting to put it towards advancing the building project or something, there was so much discourse at special town meeting that it didn't necessarily feel wise to throw the money at a project like that when there was still so much discourse.
And I, and I also just wanna be clear, so if you, if we pay the next school assessment, for example, you've just generated um an unexpendited balance in your general fund budget, so you can still spend money. You could still do a building project and spend out of that line item with a with a transfer. Um, so we can still do projects, it doesn't mean that we have to wait until next year, for example, um for it to turn into free cash, we can, this is still an active budget here um and there would be unexpendited general fund money, so if there was a directive to advance some sort of a project, we would then have that hundred and nine thousand, for example, um in a line item somewhere that we could do that project. But if you don't, it's free cash, which is nice.
Um.
Uh.
Any other?
Yeah. Um. We got an email from Tamika here about that one day event for Randy's Turkey Day. We had to have a special license, and I'm wondering if we should look at um look at adopting a policy related to these types of licenses, we've got about a half a dozen farms in in town at least. So I don't know if that's an issue. Um, if Randy's gonna do it again, or somebody else is gonna do it, or they bring in an outside vendor into this. And the, and it does allow, it's a special license may be issued through the Master Department of Agricultural Resources, but it's up to the local uh local appointing or licensing authority to be able to do that, so is that something we should look at?
So if I may, I was just gonna say, uh, the last meeting, the board voted to add the fee to the fee schedule, so we have done that.
Right. Right.
I would say if we create a policy application, it really should mimic our one day like the license application, because we would essentially ex- expect the same documentation from them, the only added step is that they first have to get that approval from MDR and then it comes to the local licensing authority, so if you'd like to have a separate one for that, I'm happy to draft that and bring that to the board.
No, that's what I'm saying, if we can combine that into the original license, that would be great.
Yeah, we can.
Just get the MDR, that's kind of where I was going, okay?
Yeah. We can, sure, yeah, we can add that in there, um, like I said, it's already on the fee schedule, so then it'll just be there if it happens to come up again.
Right. Yeah, and if you can just add in if it's applicable, do they have the MDR recommendation, whatever.
Okay.
Yep, I'll I'll reference um the MGL, and then if, you know, if it's applicable under MGL.
It. I kind of thought that's how we had left it after our last meeting, but thank you, Harry, for bringing that back up.
The. Yeah.
Mm.
Mm, yeah.
Um, anything else? Our next re- uh regular scheduled meeting, which is on an off week, is December sixteenth, and hopefully that's the tax recap. Hopefully.
Oh, if I can real quick.
Yeah.
What are we gonna be discussing as terms of policies going forward? Do we know at this point?
Of the next ones?
Um.
Or do we just wanna send stuff in and see what comes up on it?
I haven't, I haven't looked, does anybody have anything urgent?
Oh, I wanted to add, so um last week I had sent an email to the board with some samples from other communities as far as their building use policies.
Yes.
Right.
And then I provided a paper one tonight, so would the board like to take some time to kind of assess out what you like from those, and then maybe we can spend some time just on
Okay.
the building use policy?
I'm a little bit for looking at, just kind of knowing where agenda stands for next week, I'm hesitant to add policy, cause I would like to try, if we have time to finish
Yes.
the special act to get that off.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I know hopefully we'll have the tax hearing, um, and so I would like to not add policy if it's a heavy agenda.
So we'd be fair to have add the building use to January sixth?
That'll give us more time to send it. Yeah, that'll give us more time to send in comments, so.
Is that clear?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Harry, for.
My, my only request um was the street acceptance, making sure that we get something in place for
Well in advance.
well in advance of the
Be ready for January.
Yeah, I believe it's with town council right now.
Yeah.
Okay, I made town meeting, okay.
Yep.
I know planning board was so, yeah.
Thank you. Um, thank you, and thank you Tamika for pulling that building use topic together.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
So our next regular scheduled meeting for December is the sixteenth, and then our January meetings are the sixth and the twentieth. Um, and those are back on our on our on weeks, so, um, is there any other business to come before the board?
Right.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, Harry.
Second eye.
Matt's an eye.
Matt's an eye.
Waitman eye, eight twenty seven.